I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our devotion today is inspired by First Corinthians, I think verse nine. We are God's workers, working together. It's a wonderful day indeed when we stop working for God and start working for him. Hello, workers, pro-laborers, God and I work together. Imagine if our relationship is true and sincere, rather than report to God, we work in faith, rather than checking within and then leaving. We are always in possession of God, and there is never a non-existed covenant. Heavenly Father, as we do the work that the citizens do in county today, please guide us into your work to take the state of our citizens, take our highways, and renew our family's things, and support our family together. As we wish your success, I believe that our days are going to be endless, and we have precious resources to use.
Amen. I want to welcome everybody to the meeting on June seventh, two thousand twenty-one. It looks like it must be budget time because we have an audience today. So, we're glad to have you here. We'll look forward to hearing from each of those who are here to present. I also echo Commissioner Clifford's comments about it's a great community that can celebrate the beef industry with Beef Empire Days, the golf courses we have, and we even have some fair golfers around here, I understand. Are you a fair golfer? Yeah, there we go, Pro-Am. So, he's going to represent us well, and hopefully some others will. But with that, we'll get started with our meeting. So, we're going to start with seeking a motion to approve our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion second, without discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That carries. The consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That also carries. It is now time for public combat on our agenda, and this, ladies and gentlemen, is an opportunity for you to step forward and have up to five minutes to address anything that hopefully is not on the agenda. But this is your opportunity to relate concerns or cares or whatever. So, does anybody have public comment? Please come forward to the podium and if you would state your name for the record, and we'll be happy to hear from you.
Doniseu Garcia. We're here behalf of Pierceville Township on the quarry that's getting built out in Pierceville for the Huber Sand Pit. And we have a lot of concerns. Right now, we're having a lot of traffic with the Huber Sands coming in, going down our city streets. Kids ain't safe. My kids ain't safe. They can't play outside. We saw a couple trucks hit my kids. The reason we moved out there is to have a little better community. I had to pray on this, just like you guys did today, and I had to say I had to choose my job, I had to choose my life, my kids, and I chose my kids. God talked to me and told me I needed to be here today, so I'm here. It's going to be a bad deal overall. Sorry about that. It's going to affect the citizenship, the family out there. A lot of people are scared when they move in that our taxes are going to be dropped. The community is going to go away, Pierceville is going to go away. The water, you know, we don't have the water you guys have. We have to live off the well water. Just our children, period. You know, they're the future of Pierceville. A lot of young people like ourselves are moving in there to start a new community. And we ask for you guys to look at the Pierceville and look at our community and help stop it. I know Gray County approved their side of it, which is fine, just we don't want it on a Fannie County side. They are building a road about a block away from my house. I know they said they need engineers out there. I haven't seen an engineer out there, so how they building the road without the engineers out there, I have no idea.
The purpose of clarity, you said they are building a road, meaning who is building the road?
Huber Sands.
And the road that you're sharing the concern about, that's?
That's on Avenue D, which I live on Avenue C and Avenue D I own.
In Pierceville?
In Pierceville, yes.
Okay.
And that's right beyond the old schoolhouse. I own about three quarters of that city block. And my kids are there to enjoy life, you know. Back when we were little kids, we used to be able to play in the little communities like that on a dirt road, and everybody knows that we have kids, everybody drives slow. You guys don't care, you know.
And so the relief you asked from the Fannie County Commission is for us to do exactly what?
Prevent them from getting access to Pierceville. Have them go through Gray County. If Gray County approved this, let them build a road. Let them dig on that side only, and don't let them dig on our side.
It's a little difficult. It's a public road. I'm assuming that we all can agree with that.
I agree. We have to follow city guidelines, and if you see a semi in your neighborhood, it's not allowed. There's truck routes. You know, if you're in your neighborhood and you see a semi coming down, a couple of trucks, and your kids are out there, I mean, yeah, we watch out for our kids, but there's no reason for a semi to be on a city road. You know, there's truck routes for that reason. They should be going down our neighborhoods.
We might ask our county council to check with Gray County and see exactly what they've done and then what avenues Linda might be available to us. But it's a little tough to tell one company, you can't use a road and let everybody else use it, so.
Well, I agree with that a hundred percent, and that's what they have Main Street for, is to use, you know, we have semis going down that, we understand that. But the neighborhood is a little different, you know. That's for the community only.
If I might question, you're not talking about the main north-south road, you're talking city streets?
We're talking actual city streets, yes. Actually, city neighborhood streets, not the main street of Maine. We're talking about the actual city where, you know, the kids and us live, is neighborhood houses. Yes. This is the main street entering Pierceville itself. Avenue D is right here, Avenue C is here. I own this, and all this land right here. And right here is the road they come in. They've been coming down here thirty, forty miles an hour, all the way back here, they're kind of building a quarry on this side. Now, they're digging here, digging the road, which we had a fellow resident, we had a problem with roads in here, never had anybody come out and fix it because we got to follow. The county comes does our roads, but we follow city ordinance as anything else. We put some, hey, the resident put some pipes in there to get the drainage going through there because it gets really muddy out there. So, the engineer going to mess the road. Now these guys are right here making their own road.
Have you had any conversation with anybody with the Huber Sand Company about?
We tried to reach out for them. Again, there's no comments. We actually did business with them. And again, like I said, I had to choose my job or my kids, and I chose my kids.
Okay, before you leave here today, would you leave some contact information with our county clerk? And we'll ask the county council to check and see what Gray County has, and then she can generically look and see what's, if anything's available to us.
Definitely.
We can go from there. I don't know what, we're not on the agenda today, so.
Right.
Well, yes, and are some of the rest of you going to speak to this issue as well?
We have the whole back row of Pierceville here.
Was anybody else going to speak to this issue? Okay, because a lot of this goes back to the planning department or neighborhood development department. And they're not, it's our understanding, they have not received their permit yet to do this mining. And then they started building the road. So, it's not just the Gray County question. We've got a, are they getting the cart ahead of the horse question as far as permits and that kind of thing? And so, I know somebody in your group has talked to the planning department several different times, and I think we need to hear from them as well.
That is correct, and you said that they are poking at it before they, poking at the bear before it snaps. And they have been digging on Fannie County line. We did call it in. It was supposed to have stopped. So, like I said, they have permission in Fannie County, but they were already digging. And I'll let them come up.
Young lady would like to address us, is that correct?
Thank you. My name is Leslie Jones, and I've been a resident for fifty years. So, and I live on Main Street. I think our biggest thing is, they could possibly be digging at night or crunching at night. And I think if they're going to build that big building there and be bringing a bunch of traffic in at night, I think that's another concern, as far as I'm concerned. I live on Main Street, so I see all the, I've raised three children there and grandkids, and it just seems like there's a lot of traffic here just the last couple of months. They did do a test pit, and I don't know what that entails. I've also, they have another pit that they've abandoned out by Holcombe that we've taken pictures of, and that's been abandoned for fifteen years. There's a barge out there, there's junk, piles and piles of stuff, but we have evidence of that as well, so.
I'd be real curious how that is zoned, where they're building, so we have some lake work here to do.
It's agriculture.
It's ag?
Ag, but I don't know, but yeah.
Okay, anyone else want to offer a public comment?
Hello, I'm Jenna. I'm the one that's been talking to you.
Give her your full name for the, well, I mean, just for the record and microphone and everything.
Jenna Paris-Dollar.
Thank you.
Okay, this is. That test pit, can you move that down, or does it have to move that down? Because in Fannie County, it took the people that go out and check three days to get it stopped. Because it was not, it was not legal for them to do it. Huber Sand is not following the rules now. They are fixing to move in, in our back door.
Show them on the map where you live, Jenna.
This is one of our pastures, this is our arena, this is another pasture. We've got four head of horses, we've got cows, we've got goats, we've got dogs, and we've got kids. And if you Google anything else about where the sand pits are, how close are they to where other residents live? Because that's just a private dirt road out there. Can you find anywhere on Google Maps where a sand pit is allowed that close to residents or township? Anywhere. That hasn't got the river blocking or the river, hasn't got trees, or hasn't got a big old nice paved road. Can you guys find any of that anywhere? So, why are we going to allow this to happen to our community? Took us ten years to get a stop sign out there. Ten years of calling and calling and calling to get our stop signs and our street signs. Nobody pays any attention to Pierceville. Nobody. So, yes, I have been irritating everybody about this because this is a big deal. Our property value will drop. Okay, we are afraid to do improvements now because we will not be able to get out of it what we've put into it. And we've built an arena, pastures, buildings, horse barns. We've built everything, okay? But why would we want to improve anymore whenever, we're not going to be able to afford to buy anywhere else whenever nobody will pay for it? Because who wants to live next to a sand pit? I understand some of y'all live next to the windmill deal. You guys have got a fence. You guys have got a nice paved road between it. You guys have got trees growing. Huber is not going to do that for us. Huber has yet to come to the community and say anything to us about what they want to do.
Touch on, well, touch on the communications you've had with our neighborhood development and what's taken place there because I think that's what's germane to our county.
Oh, it took them two and a half weeks to call me back. Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, and you'll need to step to the mic so, because we're online. Thank you, Jenna.
Yes, whenever that pit started.
Talk about the communication and permitting and so forth and so.
They shouldn't be approved. I mean, what else could there be? We are a community, and we have our own water wells. The city's not going to come in there and pay for our water wells whenever our water drops. It comes out of our pocket, and it's going to drop. It comes out of our pocket. Am I getting anywhere close to what I need to be talking about?
Well, your communication with neighborhood development about the permits and so forth.
That they didn't call me back for two and a half weeks. Took them three days to go out there and stop digging. Huber knows the rules. They're not stupid. They know the rules. And they're sitting there thinking, well, we can do it. These people aren't going to say anything, or we can do this. They're not going to fight. Took them two and a half weeks, and I finally had to call them and wait another twenty-four hours before somebody got back to me because they are short on help. That is not my problem. That is not our community's problem. I mean, whose problem is that? It's not mine. So, they get to run sand and dig dirt, and now it's a huge hole. And I'm not really sure, but I'm pretty sure the riverbed is wider than this. Are they supposed to be, are they supposed to be in the riverbed? I mean, just down here at Garden, how wide's the riverbed there? You can't even see the riverbed anymore. Anyway, I can't. And if it is, it's only about Estee wide. I don't, I mean, they don't follow rules. They're not going to follow rules. And they're going to bring outsiders in. How many of you folks want people in your backyards? I was advised to build a fence. Why pay to build a fence whenever I'm not going to get anything out of it? What is this going to bring to the community? Nothing. Dirt, sand, traffic, and outsiders in. Everybody will be able to see in our backyard. What kind of people do they hire? I mean, we need somebody to do something for us. We don't want them there. They have nobody, and they won't be able to use that farm ground for nothing after that. No more farm ground. Nothing. Like she was talking about the pit. We've got pictures. You can't do nothing there. It's absolutely ridiculous that they even bought this property, and we know people that would love to own the property. Sell it to somebody who will use it as farm ground. The farmers, they were out there harvesting milo one day, and we were out there roping. We were out there first. They went to harvesting milo and stopped until we were done roping because all the crap was blowing in our faces, and milo dust is no fun. So, but you know, they stopped. Farmers will think of that. Huber Sand will not. And I was told, oh, the wind doesn't blow out of the south. Anybody ever looked up what Kansas means? Anybody? Yeah, blows out of the south most of the time. So, we will be eating that dirt. And I've got some callbacks from vets that are going to give me, going to give me information about how it's going to affect my animals. We've got four horses standing out there. Have you ever had to post a cow after it's done nothing but breathe dirt? What it does to their lungs? Why should I have to move? I didn't decide to move into next to a sand pit. I should not have to move to protect my kids because they also ride their bikes on the back part of our property. What are we supposed to do? We didn't move in town because I didn't want any of y'all telling me how to live. I mean, I don't want to have to, I don't want to have to have my kids here playing in the yard and that's it. We've got all that property and not allow them to go enjoy it. Anything else do I need to bring up?
Well, Mr. Chairman, and I encourage Jenna to come and speak because the frustration has been not just with the dust and not just with the rural living, but the process. And the process of Huber Sand getting a permit before anything has started and the activity started. The rumors and the things about buying the land for a sand pit, and then after the fact, they find out that's what's going on. So, the process is mixed up, and then not getting return calls and so forth and so on. So, they're very frustrated, and Jenna's not the only one. Mr. Garcia's expressed another person's opinion. But they're not asking us to do anything specific today, but they want to alert us to the fact that the process is flawed. And the permits have not been issued. It's happened with other things that have gone on in this county before, that there's been activity before a permit is issued with the assumption or presumption that it's going to be approved.
May I ask you a quick question?
So, that's why we encourage them to just come and speak their piece.
Who is going to issue the permit? Are we talking about the state?
The county has to issue a conditional use permit, the CUP, and then they also have to have a state permit for the mining part. But it's our understanding from the latest communication with neighborhood development and Jenna that they have not received their conditional use permit yet. And yet, there's road work going on, there's mining going on, or test mining, or I don't know what it would be called. But, so they're very frustrated over in Pierceville and things not going according to the planning process.
This is the pit. They've also owned this, and this little strip here, which is, this is a young parent, a young son and a daughter here, and this is the playhouse over here. They own this. This is what they're already working on. This over here is where they started their pit.
Sure.
Right here. Right here. And this is. Yep. Yes, but that still has them running through our main street. That nobody bothers to pit. See, we got like the worst issue with people coming out and working on our streets.
What is?
Like I said, ten years to get signed. That's exactly how our streets are.
What is now highlighted? That's what Huber owns?
Uh, so, yep, that's what it says.
No, that's, oh, shoot. Yeah, Garrett Beach. Garrett Beach owns that. Yeah, Garrett Beach. Garrett Beach, uh, owns that one little piece.
Okay, I'm, I'm convinced we can't fix this in the next thirty minutes. So, but let us do some work.
And they didn't get fined. Took them three days to stop digging, and they also did not get fined, because they would've had to go into court, and nobody wanted to do that.
Unfortunately, the county commission didn't issue fines.
Well, no, that's fine, but the word needs spread that they don't follow rules and they don't have to.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? If you will come, please, and, and, um, we have a number of things on our agenda today, so if you can be so, I appreciate it.
Uh, Zach Irwin. My part on this is, our water table is fifty-seven feet. Their pits are over a hundred feet deep. So what's that gonna do to our drinking water? That's one of the major issues. And then even, we have a rail crossing that is rough. It needs, it's, it needs a lot of repair. What is all this gonna do to our main street? The one road that we have? I mean, I haven't seen a road grader come out and clean our dirt roads in, forever. And then when they do, they just come out, shove the blade in the ground, dig some holes and leave. So we're left with water puddles and all that. But again, where's our drinking water go?
Okay, we'll try to find some answers for you, Zach.
And then, like, she was saying. I love my cousin moving into my property there. He's got three kids. They move from eight in the morning till ten at night. That's dirt all day. We understand living out there. Harvest, it happens. It's part of our life. But it's only, what, month, month and a half long, and it's gone. And it comes back around. This will be ten years of eating dirt. And nobody wants to live through that.
I can understand. Okay, thank you. Anyone else for public comment? No, we'll close public comment and. Well, you can't see behind that podium, I'm sorry.
I'm Lynn Paris. We retired there, my husband and myself. He passed away. So it's just me. I live by myself, okay? We inherited a small inheritance. We bought, uh, this little piece of ground. We cleaned it up to spend the rest of our lives there. I have a little pasture for my horse. And, uh, if I was to sell out, where would I start over? I'm sixty-nine years old. My place is paid for, okay? So I don't have any more bills. But that, what, what my place would bring now, I couldn't even begin to afford to buy anything, the way prices are. And my horse, have you seen a horse die of sa- sand colic? It isn't pretty. That sand and that dirt is gonna come into my pasture. So what am I supposed to do? And the only way I can afford my horse is because of my pasture. Okay? I live by myself, and I worry about the junk that's gonna be driving trucks in and out of the place. You know, all the way, my place.
It's right here on the corner. Right here. They'll be using this right here. I make them both ways.
You know, and I keep a gun. And, and my doors are always locked, and they damn sure will be after, after this. I'm scared, but I can't afford to move. So I have to deal with the poison water and the nasty air.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
We've not heard from Doyle McGraw, who kind of, not, not Doyle, um, Doug McGraw, who generally has good things to say about Pierceville. Are you wanting to say something, sir?
John Dowler, there's a sign when you pull into Pierceville that says Pierceville's opportunity. After this, if there's no opportunity out there.
Okay, thank you. All right.
It took me and my husband a year to get a permit to put a thirty by sixty building up on Main Street. I fought for a whole year of what they needed me to do. I finally got it done the end, this, in December. So that was my experience trying to get a permit for just a thirty by sixty building. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, I see that we have Alicia. Did she come over to address this?
Good morning. I was only listening prior to, um, I don't.
Try it up, please, so.
I don't know everything that was said, but I do know that Huber Sand is going to the BZA next week, next Tuesday, for their state-approved sand quarry. So anybody that has public comment should attend the BZA, because the BZA is the one that has the authority to approve or deny their request.
It's Board of Zoning Appeals.
That is the Board of Zoning Appeals.
State what you just said. Next Tuesday, I'm assuming at nine o'clock.
At nine o'clock.
And that will be in the City Hall upstairs in either the City Commission?
It'll be in the, in the chambers. I'm sorry, it's actually on Wednesday. I have a different meeting Tuesday. So Wednesday, the meeting is, is it?
That's where you folks from, you need to be at that meeting.
We rescind all the plans.
We just wanted somebody else to know what was going on.
Yeah. Yeah, be there in force, and then, and they are the body with, with some unusual authorities set by statute. They make a decision, and the only thing that can overturn that decision is a district court. So, uh, be there.
Wednesday at nine AM.
Now, you said Tuesday, or is it Wednesday?
It's Wednesday.
It's Wednesday.
All right.
The chairman, chairman is correct. I was on that Board of Zoning Appeals for a number of years, and county commission cannot overrule the Board of Zoning Appeals. So this is where your case needs to be really held.
And, and I know Jenna understands that, cause I've, I've mentioned that to her before, but, uh, let me, uh, understand, or help me understand a couple of things. Uh, one, do they not have to have the conditional use permit before they go to the state? Or before, or, or is this for the conditional use?
Yeah, so it's for the conditional use permit. They already have their state license.
Oh, they already have?
They already have their state license. Now, we did go out and talk with them and issue a stop work order. They do have, on the Gray County side, too, they have a, a li- a state license to dig on that side. And we did let them know that if they're gonna be digging, it can't be on Fannie County's side. Now, I don't know what Gray County's regulations are, but as far as we're concerned, we're just worried about Fannie County.
And then secondly, are, are not the residents within a thousand feet or?
Yeah, within a thousand feet, they should've got a notice of hearing letter that went out.
Okay, so did you get that? Did you get that letter? Okay.
So that part's working.
Six.
Yeah, right. I understand that.
Yeah, when they had started.
I wanted to make sure you were notified.
When they had started digging, they had not applied for their conditional use permit.
Right.
And the conditional use permit could say, you can't come through Pierceville.
Yeah, that would be, um, the board has the authority to put any additional conditions as far as our regulations. We, we don't regulate them really. They just need a conditional use permit, and the state is the one that regulates.
Understand. Okay, thank you, Alicia. I, uh, I don't wanna abandon your, your folks, your frustration, but we have other things we need to cover today in a limited amount of time, so. We appreciate it. Let us work on it. Uh, we'll, we'll now wait and, uh, I, I was premature in what I was saying. But I wanna wait until after the Board of Zoning Appeals, here's this case, then we'll know what direction it's going, so.
Yeah, well, I just got one question right quick. Them putting that tin horn in, coming off of the Pierceville Black Talk, don't you guys, doesn't the county have to approve them to do that? Cause that is an interest off of a county road.
Well, it, it, I don't know what approval, cause farmer can build a field drive, and we even help them with that without.
Well, and I understand that, but you know, if they was to come in, because they, they've got an entrance that they can use off of the state highway. But that, you know, I, I mean, I drive truck, I'll be the person that I drive one first of all.
Sure.
Hey.
You need to be proud on public.
But when you get an entrance into a quick stop, or anything off of a highway, county road, anything, for a business, do you guys not have to approve for an engineer to come in, to come in and say that it is quote, "good enough"?
Up to my knowledge, do you know the? On state highway, yes, but he's talking about coming in.
The Pierceville County, the Black Talk. Okay, cause see, where they're putting, where they're wanting to put that tin horn in, that ditch, I mean, you can ask anybody here, is probably six foot deep. And there's days when it rains, like, two weeks ago, we got six inches of rain. That was full. It's gonna worse their tin horn out. What's it gonna do to the road?
Okay.
You see what, you see what I'm saying, though? Cause it, it should have to be done right.
Bring that, bring those points up next week at that meeting.
All right, that'll work. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under old business, do we have anything that we need to cover? If not, Scott, where's Scott? There he is. Come forward, please, and let's hear a budget request from Russell Child Development Center. And you can do that in, in short order, right?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Absolutely can. I'll try to be as brief as possible. I'm Scott Kudrowski. I'm a director for Russell Child Development Center, and I, thanks, guys, for the opportunity to come talk to you about our services today. Um, what a year twenty twenty has been for sure. Um, and, and in the packet that we filled out for Robert, um, we highlighted some of the changes that we made in our services to continue the high-level services that we do for children and families right here in Fannie County. Um, I have also passed out a brochure for you as well. Just a little bit about us, just to, just to remind you, um, we are, um, a section of IDEA. Um, on the first page of the packet that I'm going through here, um, we'll just kinda go through that packet very quickly, Dave, um, for you. We are, we are a part of IDEA, um, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Um, as an agency, we do serve thirteen counties with our Tiny K program, and that's what we're making the ask for today. The purpose of early intervention is enhance development of infants and toddlers with disabilities, to minimize their potential for developmental delays, and to recognize the significant brain development that occurs in the first three years. And to, and then to enhance the capacity of families to meet the needs of their infants and ju- infants and children. The, the, the thing that I really wanna get through to you guys today is the, uh, the work that we do with families and partnering with them, working in, um, those natural environments to really have better outcomes for the children, and really make the family unit a stronger family unit as we go through. The second page, just as a real snapshot, I like to give a snapshot and a review of kind of what, what it is and what we do. There we are. I'm on the second page, um, of that. First of all, we have twenty-six staff members. Actually, that should be twenty-seven. We just hired another nurse that's gonna, that's actually moving here to Fannie County. And so we have twenty-seven staff members that have master's degree or higher, um, education levels when they're working with those children and families. So we bring a high level of employment, um, to those folks that move here. We do do direct visits. We're so excited. We're actually doing visits back in the homes. We have been for a couple of months now. Still have the option of a family. If they'd like to do Zoom, uh, we still do Zoom with those families, or we're going face-to-face with families. Um, of course, wearing masks, social distancing, all that kinda stuff that we all now know is normal, um, to be able to do it. But it's still, still having incredible outcomes for our children and families. We really do like the evidence, and we wanna talk about the evidence a little bit here for you, for you guys. When we're involved with, with children, birth to three, the evidence shows that for every dollar that we put in, research really shows that we get a thirteen percent return on those dollars. And the evidence is really pointing to us that, that the family, when you get in, you work with a family, and you empower a, a parent to be more confident and competent in what they do, um, there's a, there's a less reliance, um, on social services, meaning that they won't be involved with the, um, some of those services that you need, so social services, um, special education. There's no more need for special education. There's no, there's less involvement with those support services, DCF, St. Francis. Your, your, um, school district will need less interventions with them. They just function better as a family, be able to do that. So, um, and then really just, it really enhances that child to be school-ready and ready to go. Um, we're starting to see some evidence around that third grade, which is a real important testing time of involvement and early intervention, is really boosting those third grade scores, and which is a real good predictor of high school graduation and then college success on. So some really good evidence around there for you. Out of, of every child that we work with, we exit about one of them as age-appropriate, and one out of every four we're exiting is age-appropriate. So that's a really nice thing, is that child no longer needs special education. That child is on and ready to learn, which is really our goal, is to have confident and competent parents, and then children that are school-ready. And by involvement in our services, um, they're able to do that. A list of the services that we provide, um, the major ones that you think of is occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech-language pathology, early childhood special education, social work, nursing. All those services are free for children with, um, developmental delays or, or, um, dis- disa- um, developmental delays or disabilities, and when they're working with those families. I love that quote on the bottom of that second page. Um, Beth is a parent of ours, um, and she said, "They, RCDC, gave me the skills and strategies that I needed to be more successful at raising both of my girls to be developmentally on target." And really, that's what it's about, is partnering with parents and giving them the skills to be confident and competent to rear their own children, to, um, really get through every day, and really do improve outcomes and become more school-ready. Um, I always try to include a story in, in this, and this story is actually a Garden City teacher, um, that, um, was living through the pandemic, and also, um, had a child that had plateossephaly and torticollis. And what that is, that's a, that's a, um, that's a, uh, developmental issue that happens, um, when the shortening of the neck. And it's from, it's from being positioned, um, poorly, and then just some tightness in the neck. And our physical therapist goes up and, and works with them, and she talks, I'm not gonna read this to you, but she goes in and works with this family, and this is a well-educated teacher, um, and she kinda talks about her story and how those pictures are what the head looked like at the very first, and what the head looked like at the end. And if we're not in there working with this family for free, um, then this progresses to the point that they may need a helmet. If you get past six months, then they're gonna need a helmet. If you've ever seen those children that have those, those plateossephaly helmets on, those are quite expensive and not covered by insurance. So we're able to get in there, work with the family, and this mom really tells her story about how we did it over Zoom and we made it work. And it's just a, a great story, um, for us to be able to, to think about our services, and all of our services are like that. Where we get in there and, and work with families and really do, um, show good progress on those, those disabilities or delays. Just our numbers overall as an agency, um, those are on the left as a total agency. We worked with eleven-hundred-and-forty-one children in Fannie County last year. About a third of our overall children that we serve, um, are here in Fannie County. As a Tiny K, um, the program that we're talking about today, that's that graph on the right there. Two years ago, we served six-hundred-and-thirty-five children. Last year, we served five-hundred-and-forty-six. So we did see a dip because of the pandemic. I'm pretty darn proud that we served that many kiddos, because that shows that we are really all about relations, and really parents valued ours enough to make that transition, to follow us on Zoom and to stay engaged and to really do that. We are crazy busy right now, um, doing about seventy-five or eighty referrals a month. Right now, our ladies are, um, busting their tail, um, for sure, and so we will see that number. I think we'll be over six-fifty next year, of the number of children served just by, by our referrals and how many kiddos that we're going through. The next page is all about the dollars. Um, I try to be as, as transparent as possible when we do make a budget request like this. Overall, our program, um, is budgeted at a two-point-seven million dollars. Most of that is salaries and benefits, as you can see. Two-point, two-point-four, two-point-three million of that is salaries and benefits. The next one is what I call the hard soft numbers, which is number, or dollars that we can pretty much, um, we will hit, for government, just for government funding alone. A hundred-and-fifty thousand in Medicaid. We do bill those folks from Medicaid that are Medicaid-eligible with our services. Our special education or categorical aid and transportation reimbursement, that hits about nine-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars. Our mill levies, which you guys play such an important role in, that's, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that we're able to get. Our grant that they actually give us to run this two-point-seven million dollar program is, um, just under seven-hundred thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand dollars. Um, and so total government funding is about two million dollars, um, for this project. Then we go out, and that's where I step in as a special initiatives director, and we do things like, um, write grants, fundraise, our Fantasy Tree Festival, um, for that, partner with FinUp Foundation, work with the United Ways to be able to reduce that down a little bit. As you can see, our projected funding gap is about twenty-two percent. Um, the percentages there are the different, um, the different governmental agencies and where the funding has gone. Um, the percentages there are the different, um, the different governmental agencies and where the funding has gone for that. As you can see, the, the bottom is just a, uh, the bottom there is just shows you kind of the past years from 2012, what our funding gap was and, um, where we finished for the year. We typically, um, end up with about a hundred thousand dollars that RCDC ends up picking up for our, for our services for them. The next page is a, I like to show all of the different, um, counties that we serve and the mill asks that we have for them. Um, we are asking this year's request is $166,000. Um, as you do have 37% of the population that we serve, we base our total ask on the population. Um, and we would ask, uh, for an increase, um, in that as well this year. Our, the next page of that is just a, a real quick, um, just our, our organizational chart, just for your viewing, just to kind of know who we are and what we do. The last page that I would show, um, to you is a breakdown of the number of children served um, in Finney County and just kind of where they, where they went from. We did sort of serve 268 children in the Tiny K um, network last year, 489 came in our Child and Adult Food Care Program, 136 Growing Together, 131 Triple P. Um, so we have a significant, a significant, um, footprint here in Finney County. Of course, our central office is here. Um, our new, our new office is out here. Um, and so we do have program staff in Finney County five days a week. Uh, over 50 of those staff members live right here in Finney County. So we have a great economic impact here as well. Um, we do have, uh, family and childcare provider supports here. Um, we have learn and play facilitators that live right here in Garden City. And then we have, um, we do have a fantastic partnership with St. Catherine's and our newborn follow-up offered by St. Catherine's. Um, I did want to take just a little bit, something different today. I did bring a parent to talk to you guys this morning. Um, and I do want to invite Maggie to come on up. I told her, I told Maggie, you guys are gonna love this. I told her that I'm gonna put her on the stand today. Um, so that's a lawyer joke.
Very proud of his joke. Good morning. Margaret Schultz, go by Maggie. Um, my husband and I are attorneys here in town. We have had two premature babies in the past four years. So in 2017, our son was born at 31 weeks and five days in Wichita. And then in 2019, our daughter was born at 31 weeks in Wichita again. Even being at the hospitals in Wichita, we were referred back to Russell through our providers in Wichita. Um, that story from the mom actually reminded me that my older, or my middle maverick that was born in 2017 actually had that issue with his neck. I would have never caught it. He would have had to get a helmet. I didn't even notice it until we had an OT and a PT in there and working with him. Um, and he never had to wear a helmet. We saw a doctor twice and everything Russell did cleared it up. With our youngest Scarlett, she was born in 2019 and so we got to do services through the pandemic and through Zoom and, um, they just, you know, they kept up everything. It wasn't as, as beneficial to me as having someone in person. I'm a hands-on type of learner. Um, but they did amazing. Again, we had a PT and an OT for her that was at our house. Um, when we were doing in-person, half of our visits were probably at our office on a conference room floor. They came over to the office. We went and got our kiddo from daycare and they just made it work wherever, wherever we needed to be at. Um, so they've kind of been involved in my family for four years. We did graduate both of them out like he was talking about. So neither of them will need any future services as far as we know and where they're tracking at right now. So that's an exciting thing for a parent of a preemie that early that they're not gonna need any additional resources going forward. Um, and then I have been on the board for four years now. So since my middle kiddo was born, I've been serving on the board and I've served as the chair of the board for the past two years. I think my term on that's coming to an end, but I plan to continue to be around. So if any of you ever have any questions about, about Russell, I've learned a lot over four years and plan to continue supporting them throughout my, hopefully the rest of my career and life here. So. Anything else you want to think of?
Thank you.
So in, in conclusion, what I would just say is that, uh, we, we have a unique position with Russell Child Development Center to do and to stand in the gap of what's not available out here in southwest Kansas. Um, Maggie took advantage of our physical therapists and occupational therapists and there's just not pediatric, occupational therapists and physical therapists. And if they are, then you have to drive to Wichita, Kansas City and pay, um, all of those extra dollars. All of our services are free. All of our services are offered in the natural language in the home, working with parents to build those strengths up in a very positive way. And we have fantastic outcomes. It's a great investment, um, for, for Finney County, for the county commissioners to look at investing in. The return on investment is higher than any other, um, request you'll probably get today. And so I just encourage you to look at increasing that, um, to help us continue to do our work here. And I would stand for any questions you guys have.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Ask for, for a raise, but I'm seeing 166.
Correct.
Across the board.
Hmm.
That's what you're asking for.
Yeah, 166, correct.
Well, you just like for us to fund the whole 166. That's what you're asking.
Yeah, I'm asking for you to, I'm asking for 166,000. You've typically been around 100. It was actually higher, used to be higher years ago. Um, and we've, we've seen a redo, reduction in that. Um, but that's based on, Dave, that's based on the number of folks that live, population and the budget, and we just divide it out percentage wise. So that's 37% of, um, of our total budget request.
Okay. Any other commissioners, comments or questions?
Scott, uh, certainly this is a worthwhile investment in kids here and the commission understands that. Uh, the American Rescue Plan has a large, uh, separate, uh, pocket of funds called the ESER funds that the State Board of Education's dealing with right now. It, is, are you have an opportunity to tap into that? Are you aware of?
I'm not, I've not heard of anything trickling down to Part C. It gets kind of confusing, uh, at the state level because that's KSDE and we're actually funded through KDHE. And so that's a total different pocket of dollars, um, as it rolls through because we pull our money from the Children's Initiative Fund. And so I'm not for sure if we'll get that or not. I will look into that though, Doc.
Yeah, it's, it's a big pot. I mean, the state's getting nearly a billion.
That's fantastic.
Only going to education. A lot of it's to make up deficits that occurred during the pandemic. I don't see any reason why you, you wouldn't have eligibility.
Right.
On the, the other letters.
No. It's just. It gets, it gets convoluted at the state level, which imagine that, right? Um, but as you, KSDE is the, as education's main person and KDHE is our main person. They sometimes don't, they don't share those funds as, as readily as you would like, but I think we could absolutely be looking at it.
Yeah, I, I know someone to ask, so I'll.
You know somebody?
Thank you. Anything else?
Well, Scott, first of all, I appreciate what Russell does. Uh, secondly, I can relate to the helmet thing because, uh, not in our territory, but in northwest Kansas, we've got a, a young family member wearing a helmet.
Mm-hmm.
As we speak. Uh, so I can relate to, to that on a family basis. Uh, but the, uh, third que, uh, third, uh, item, uh, and I ask this to you each year. You're still a part of Greenwood, uh, are, are you not?
Green Bush, correct, yes.
Uh, and they're out of southeast Kansas.
Yes, Gerard.
And, and that relationship is still going well. And then, uh, part B to that question is kind of related to what, uh, Bill asked. Do they help you identify sources like this, uh, new, new monies that are coming into Kansas through the COVID, uh, uh, relief? Do they help you with that or are you on your own to identify those, uh, those funds?
Uh, first of all, I'll, I'll answer the first one. Green Bush has been, has been Green Bush. Greenwood, Green Bush. I mean, it's all kinds of trees. Um, along I had to, um, they am, uh, they have been wonderful to work with for us. They really have that knowledge of Tiny K. Um, working with us and, and the budget piece of it, the Medicaid reimbursement piece of it. Um, we just actually went to electronic billing with them and they're helping, they're helping us go through that to take, um, pressure off Dana McNutt, our chief financial officer. She was doing all of that and now Green Bush is actually picking that up. They have a lot of knowledge about Tiny K and funding. They do work with us on, at the state level to find those dollars. Um, the, the local level, that's really my job to look at the local level and find those partners for us at the local level. But the state and the federal level, Green Bush really does, um, have that, have that knowledge and is working really hard with us. And that's who I was gonna talk to. Um, Dr. Clifford, um, was Green Bush and our friends up there. Monica Renean actually sits on the children's cabinet. Um, and that's who I think would have that knowledge is, is, so she's, works for Green Bush as a director for there and she's also sits on the children's cabinet, so.
Yeah, it's a ESSR. I'm not sure what that mnemonic stands for. ESER funds.
ESER, ESSR, okay.
All right. Thank you, Scott.
No problem.
Motion. Have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Scott. Mark, I see you're up next.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'll try to breeze through this, but if you have questions, I certainly don't want to do that to detriment of the material there and the requests, so, um, as, uh, as I go through this, if you have questions as I go or you can wait till later, that's fine. Um, page one of our, our packet there really is just some information about SDSI, Southwest Developmental Services Incorporated. Oh, by the way, I'm Mark Hyne, president and CEO of SDSI.
Good job.
We didn't know you.
I know, but I've, I've stated for the record. Uh, we're the, the Community Developmental Disability Organization for 18 counties, 13 here in the southwest corner with an office here, our main office here in Garden City and five in the, uh, central Kansas area with an office in the Great Bend area. We serve five counties there. Uh, right now, when we put this packet together, which has been a couple of months ago and hey, going through 18 counties, it takes a while to get, get there. So actually started, I believe, back at the first part of April, but we don't change anything as we go. At that point in time, we had 1,060 individuals in our service system. The local finance plan there, you can see the county funds we received in 2020 were 529,394. Uh, we contribute state aid to our local finance plan, the full amount, which is 327,062. And that is discretionary money that we get through our CDDO contract with the state of Kansas. We put that in there. And then below there, you can see what we have budgeted there, what we received from Kansas, the state of Kansas, 712,000. And then we use some money there to supplement our total budget from the counties. Page two is, uh, the statute that relates to the relationship that we have with, with the counties we serve. County can choose to do this on their own or they can contract with an organization such as SDSI nonprofit. Um, Johnson County, Wyandotte County, Sedgwick County, or three counties I can think of right off the top of my head that do it on their own, but for the most part, everybody else that I'm aware of, the 105 counties, they, they choose to contract with somebody. Page three is the, the request that we have and we list all 18 counties. So you can see what we, we, we request from them. We're still using the 2012, uh, census data. When we get to 2020, when it becomes available and is, is finalized, we'll use it next year. But you can see Finney's, uh, 24.33%. Uh, we do ask every county for CDDO administration dollars and that, that takes what we supplement our budget with, 223,000. And then that request for population is what we utilize in the local finance plan. That total dollar man at the, at the bottom there has not changed to any substantial degree at all over, well, since we started requesting funding in this manner, using a population-based. So you see for, for, um, 2022, the request for Finney is 187, 235. You can see the last two columns, what we requested from the 18 counties for 2021 and what we have in contract with those counties this year. Page four is the number of individuals from each of the counties that we serve, the 18 counties. Uh, Finney County, we have 371 individuals living here. Of those, Finney County, 357 of those originated from Finney County. That's using the database from the state of Kansas, which, which I'm not gonna say is 100% correct, but it's the best that we have and I think it's fairly accurate. Page five is, is our local finance plan, the use of those funds. You can see in 2020 how we utilize that. The big ticket item there is the transportation subsidy, 511,000 that we paid out to providers. We do this on a monthly basis. So they will bill us for individuals they serve for day services, residential services or both combined. And then we will pay them accordingly, what, what the dollar amount is. If an individual changes, that money goes to the new provider. So if they decide they want to go from Mosaic Garden City to Destiny Supports, money the next month and Destiny Supports will bill us for those fu, those funds. Page six is the community service providers, direct care and their case management folks that we have. You can see the city in which their, hey, their main office is located. They also in many cases will provide services outside of that city, but for the most part, they're Finney County, Surt County and Barton County are the three main counties in which, and of course, that's Great Bend liberal and, and, uh, Garden City that the services are mainly provided in. Page seven has not changed, other than the numbers at the top there. I'm gonna point that out to you. This is a duties and responsibilities that SDSI point performs as a community developmental disability organization. Uh, again, we have 1,060 individuals, 578 received residential day, we're in-home supports, 457 receive case management only. Page eight is, um, the, we do have head housing. That is, they are separate corporations from SDSI. So these were developed and built, I believe, go back to about the mid eighties to the mid nineties, maybe 83 to 95. And this will just show you that, for instance, in Garden City, we have seven group homes, uh, with 48 units available there. And then apartment buildings in Garden City, we have seven apartment buildings and those apartment buildings, uh, can be a triplexes, they can be six plexes, uh, they can be an eight plex, but as you can see, apartment units, 46 here in Garden City. We have a total of units of 122. And, and to let you know, those, those head properties that we operate, sometimes we'd love to give them to somebody else because as a landlord, um, you have all kinds of things come up, but, but without those, I'm not sure where folks would live. So it, it, it's really beneficial to the folks that we serve. Uh, we do buy locally. We do have handymen locally that do the work when we have uh, need to put new carpet in, to repair things. So, uh, that, that is money that is spent locally here. Page nine is organizational chart, board of directors. Sherry, Sherry DeLeon is our, uh, Finney County, your Finney County representative on the board. This, uh, org chart just, uh, um, went outdated the other day because Ashley Schultz gave us a couple of months, maybe three months warning that at the end of May, she was gonna be a stay-at-home mother. And so we were fortunate enough, we were able to hire a replacement and she trained him and the end of May, she was gone. So hate to see her go, but I understand it. Page 10 just shows some information there at the top for the applications received for the year. And they go back from 2010 up through, through the 2020, which you can see 2020 was down substantially, especially when you go back to the 2012 number of 134, down to 61. Was that because of the pandemic, the COVID? I don't know. These numbers will vary from month, from, or from year to year. The very bottom of that page goes into the waitlist. 4,522 individuals were on the waitlist as of March 9th, 2021. 337 from our 18 counties. When you look at the numbers below that, the 2011, there were eight individuals that number one were determined eligible, number two requested services. That's what you have to do to get on the waitlist. So it is by, again, determination that you're eligible and then it's the date you signed up for the waitlist. So they use the date. Now, what happened between then and now is that waitlist offers went out from the state of Kansas, 125 waitlist offers. Of 125, we received 21 of them. Of those 21, 17 folks accepted services, three declined, one had moved. So, and, and of those 17 that accepted, 15 were from this area, what we consider our southwest area, these 13 counties. Uh, two from around the Barton, Barton County area. So we felt very fortunate that we had that many of 125 in our area that were, that were, uh, offered services. Those waitlist numbers come on, from page 11, the website from the state of Kansas. Uh, you can see there highlighted towards the bottom of the page, the Intellectual Developmental Disability Waiver. 9,036 individuals were receiving services, 4,522 were on the waitlist. Now, of course, those numbers change because the other thing, an individual can get on the waiver through a crisis request. Now that crisis request comes locally to us. We have a committee that, that reviews that crisis request. We then send it to these, if we deny it, it doesn't go anywhere, but they can appeal that. If we, I'm not gonna say approve it, we recommend it, send it on up to the state and then the state has final approval if someone gets in. So they can get, and that's required by the feds. So there is more than one way to get on this, but you have to also consider the fact you have 4,522 individuals waiting. What makes it worthwhile? Why, why should they jump over 4,522 individuals? Or they may be on the waitlist somewhere, jump over how many there are, but anyway, it's, it's a, it's something that's not taken lightly. It's something that, that. It's something that we feel is a very deep responsibility that we have to do. There's a map there of the state of Kansas, shows the twenty-seven CDDOs. You can see the thirteen counties here in the southwest corner that we serve, and the five counties in the central Kansas. Very last page is a list of the board members, SDSI board members. I have filled one of those vacancies, well, they will be filled in June. In 2020, I did want to make it out to these communities to try and see if I could talk to civic organizations or so on, but 2020 was a different year. It didn't happen, so with that, I'll stand for questions.
I have one quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned transportation being a big cost, up so, like, half a million. I have, I guess, a hypothetical. Somebody is accepted from, let's say, Barton County to Mosaic Housing and Programs here in Fannie County. At what point do they become a Fannie County person, for your records, when you're showing so many from each county? When do they lose their Barton County?
Yeah, the county of origin would still, if that's where they originated from, Barton County, that's still gonna stay there, but they'd be living in Fannie County. And we really don't see much movement, if any movement, between the two areas, even with providers. We don't have any provider that I'm aware of. Now, that serves both. We have providers that provide services in these thirteen counties and providers in the five counties, but I haven't seen movement of individuals either.
Thank you. Anybody else? Larry?
Mark, a question on page four. It shows county living, origin county. Now, those are, are those the totals for a year, or how, where are those, where did those come from?
This came off the state's database, and the county of origin would have been, where did they originate, where'd they come from? And then where they're living at, of course, would be currently, and it does correspond to the thousand sixty individuals that were in our service system as of the date we put this together.
What I'm trying to get at, you have three hundred and seventy-one living spots available in Fannie County?
No, we don't. We don't, as far as the HUD housing, if that's what you're asking, no. No, 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 they also live in apartments and, you know, I know.
But they're receiving your services.
Right, right, yeah, they're getting services from our providers. I mean, Mosaic Garden City has a HUD project, it's just one unit, I believe, out there, and I don't know how many apartments there are in it, but out there, close to Old Chicago, right across from Menards.
Well, how many housing, oh, yeah, like, you look through here, how many housing, or how many spots do you guys control? I mean, you manage, I guess it was on this one page.
You know, the number, in the seven group homes, we have forty-eight, here in Garden City, we have forty-eight, and a group home, an individual leases the room. Now, of course, there's the common area, they all have the kitchen and the dining room, the living room and so on, but we have forty-eight there for group homes. As far as apartment settings, we have thirty units. Most of our apartments are two-bedroom, up on Lost River Road, there's a four-plex. Each one of those is a one-bedroom unit, and that's the only only unit that we have that is just one-bedroom, but everything else is two-bedroom.
So the difference between what you guys control and our private contractors?
Right, right. And in some cases, some folks do receive in-home supports, which then they can hire.
Their own home?
Yes, they may live in their own home, and some of what we got off the waitlist, I believe, and I don't know how many, but were actually minors that live in the home that need help. The family needs help, and you can get help there as well. I mean, the managed care organization will determine how many hours, for instance, a week that an individual needs, and that's what they'll allow for an outside person to be hired and come in and do that work.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Question, I guess, statewide, it looks to me like there's only about half of those people that request assistance, only about half is available can be helped, is that?
Yes, yeah. I mean, you look at this waitlist now, it is ten years, ten years plus, if I'm understanding your question. I mean, it is, how it's gonna ever get addressed, I don't know. I mean, all it's done is grow in the last fifteen, twenty years. At one point, we didn't have a waitlist. I've been here thirty years in September in Garden City and employed at SDSI. At one point, in the late nineties, I believe, we had no waitlist. Since then, it's grown to this. At some point, it's gonna be, I think, it's gonna be a problem for the state. I mean, you can look at other states that have the waitlist growing to this degree, there ends up being lawsuits, and there's the OMAC that really addresses some of those things, and I don't even pretend to know much about it, but it does start to get to the point that, hey, you can die on the waitlist.
Larry, thought of one.
One more question.
That's a better.
Is there a correlation between the waitlist and the amount of homeless we see? Because I see homeless people now that I've never seen before.
I don't know if that relates as much to our, we do have, let me get, we do have folks that are duly diagnosed, so they have mental illness as well as a developmental disability, intellectual developmental disability. And that, yeah, that can affect it, but I think it's more the, and I'm stepping out of my expertise here. You know, what you read, what you see, mental illness is something that really creates part of the problem with the homeless, but for our folks, for the most part, we don't see that. And as strange as, one other thing, as strange as this seems, homelessness is not one of the things when we look at the crisis request. It's not something that would determine someone to be eligible because of crisis. We don't set the rules.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark, a couple of things. One, this waiting list keeps growing because there's not providers to take care of them. I'm still struggling with, why is the waitlist continuing to grow?
The first reason is because there's not appropriations made by the state of Kansas. The state of Kansas, for the most part, is a sixty, forty, feds, we put in forty cents, feds kick in sixty on this waiver, and I'm saying that approximately.
Yeah, I get that.
But that would be what, that's what has to happen. Right now, the waitlist we got had nothing to do with appropriations from the state legislature. It had to do with, I think, between the three MCOs, managed care organizations, that they had openings, or they had enough money in their contracts, I don't know exactly what they say, but their contracts with the state of Kansas, that they allowed a hundred and twenty-five folks come in.
So is it fair to summarize that by saying that the waiting list is growing due to financial?
Yes, yes.
Shortcomings?
Yeah. The other thing, though, when you look at this waitlist, you're looking at folks that, hey, we're saying ten years now. So anybody who might think they might need services in ten years, they're gonna be encouraged by their target case manager to get on the waitlist, and like I just said, twenty-one in our area were offered, seventeen accepted. So that, if you take that times four thousand five hundred twenty-two, and I don't know if that's a representation of the total population, but you would definitely have folks, if all the money became available tomorrow, we wouldn't spend it, because there'd be folks that would not do it.
Right, okay. And then my second question, and I'm on page six of your presentation, but you mentioned a little bit ago, youth, you know, in-home needing services. As I look through the agencies, I'm not familiar with a couple of them, most of them I am, but like Russell is with young people, I know Mosaic is adult, but is it kind of an even split with our providers, or do some of them work with both youth and adult, or with the ones here in Garden?
You know, for the most part, when we're talking indirect, self-directed services or in-home services, we're talking where a family uses what's called the financial management, financial management services. And the FMS, and you'll see them down there under other services, some of those are, Craig Resources, I believe is, and I think we have some others too. Well, no, the nine providers, financial, I'm sorry, local and statewide. What that does, it takes away the payroll responsibility from the family. All the family has to do is bring somebody in, hire them, then the FMS provider will take care of all the paperwork. They're the ones that pay the individual, they're the one that pay payroll taxes, anything that goes with that. So when you're looking at that, that's, none of these providers do that, that I'm aware of.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we take this under advisement, this budget request.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Tony, it is your shot. How are you today?
I am doing well, how are you guys? Thank you for having me, I'm Tony Burnett, I'm with the Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center. Probably all of you know what we do, but I'll just go over it pretty briefly. We are an organization that fights child abuse, and we do that with three primary services. We do forensic interviewing, where we cooperate with law enforcement and DCF to actually interview a child where there is suspected child abuse. We do advocacy, which connects families and children to the services that they need to overcome this. This could be something as simple as a ride across town to an appointment with another organization, or it could be working with the county attorney to help a child get accustomed to a courtroom, because this is, of course, a crime when you talk about child abuse. About eighty percent of the cases that we work is actually child sexual abuse, so it's a pretty specialized service that we provide. And then the third core service that we do is actual therapy for children. We have four full-time therapists in Garden City who work with children to help them overcome the trauma of the abuse. And it's a very specialized type of therapy that we provide. This isn't something that typically you would get when you go through your training program. So a lot of that is learned through working with our founders, our program coordinator, David Filer, who's actually a therapist, been working with this for the last seventeen years. We are requesting a small increase, we're not requesting anywhere near the kind of funding the guys ahead of me were requesting. We're requesting fifteen thousand dollars. And that would be the largest request that we make of the counties that we serve. We are now working with thirty-four counties. We go to the Oklahoma border, the Colorado, and the Nebraska border, and as far back as Smith and Jewell County toward the east. We are a little bit different than a lot of the CACs out there. There are fifteen other child advocacy centers in Kansas in that we actually provide the services directly to the counties. We get in our RVs and go to the counties that are out there. We've got three core offices, Garden City, Hayes, and Scott City, and so that's where we spread out from in order to provide the services. The big thing in dealing with this that we try to do is we're trying to make sure that these children have the opportunity to heal, they have a chance toward the future. All of the studies show that when children go through these kind of experiences and they don't have somebody who's there to help them overcome it, they're more likely to be involved with drugs, they're more likely to be involved with crime. They earn less money, they don't go as far in school, and they tend to have more physical and mental health problems as adults. It's a problem that carries on throughout their entire lives, and so we are here to try to make sure that that doesn't happen. Last year, we provided a hundred and ten interviews in Fannie County. Fannie County is the location where we do the largest single portion of our services. That's about twenty percent of all of the interviews that we provided. We did advocacy for a hundred and ninety-nine children in Fannie County, and then therapy for a hundred and two. And then one of the things that Robert and I had looked at during the meeting is that that, the actual work that we do, we did about sixteen hundred and forty instances of advocacy for Fannie County children and eleven hundred and fourteen sessions of therapy, which is around a third of all of the work that we do as far as therapy and advocacy. So we do a lot of work here. So I can be very brief. Are there any questions from the commissioners?
I have a couple.
Sure.
Excuse me, you did have, sorry about that. You did have a mobile office that, are you guys still?
Yes, we've got six. We've got, we've got six now, we've got three that are set up to do mobile interviews, two are set up to do therapy, and one that's actually set up so that we can do SANE exams, sexual assault nurse examiner, because a lot of the counties, of course, that we serve are very rural areas, and they may not have someone who's trained to do that. So we're trying to provide, you know, every service that you could possibly provide in order to fight this. The SANE exam, of course, would go toward evidence collection for police prosecution.
I have two other quick questions, Tony, and get my voice back. You work dominantly with law enforcement and county attorneys in order to provide your services, is that correct?
That's correct. We do not have any walk-in, off-the-street clientele. We are only involved when an investigation is already progressing. And so it's gonna be either a sheriff, police, or DCF that we're going to work with. It's, yeah, nobody calls us up and says, I want you to do an interview, unless there's already an investigation.
Then my final question is, you're in an area that gets a little fuzzy about who else is providing a similar service. So are you distinct and different than every other provider of services for the young folks that you deal with?
I'd say that we're distinct, certainly with interviewing. I don't believe there's anyone else that does the interview process. Now, as far as therapy, there are other private therapists that provide therapy for children, but we're different in that we don't charge the families or anyone else for the services that we provide. And so we try to make sure that there's an opportunity for people who maybe couldn't afford it. And we do actually refer people out of our services because we are unable to take all of the need. There are more children than we can handle.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick questions, my understanding, you mentioned DCF, so I'm assuming that's the source of your state funds? Because on your budget spreadsheet, you show state funds and federal funds as sources of funding?
No, we don't actually receive money from DCF. We would get money in grants to help support the CACs directly from the state. And the federal is kind of the same way, we receive VOKA fundings, Victims of Crime Act fund. That's the single largest source of our funding, I think that that's around seven hundred thousand dollars for VOKA. We also receive JAG, and I can't remember what that stands for right now, but that's a federal-level program.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Last year, with the COVID issues, how were you able to handle children that were required to be separated from their predator, even though it was a home setting? What did you guys do then?
Well, we don't actually have any control over decisions. We have influence. So we would be there to provide the interview, we would be there to try to provide therapy, but as far as what the, what was gonna be done with placement, that's out of our hands.
That's controlled by?
That'd be like DCF or the courts, and in an emergency situation, the police, the police protective custody.
Anything else? Accept a motion.
Move to take this budget request under advisement.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carmen, are you, or Andy, or who's coming forward? Carmen is okay.
Good morning. Carmen Rhodes with the Fannie County Conservation District. Thank you for taking the time to hear us. I didn't make such a beautiful packet as some of the others did, so. We are requesting our baseline thirty thousand, as we do about every year. We would receive matching funds from the state up to twenty-five thousand. The trend has been around the twenty-two, one fifty. Around that mark is what we've been getting every year, as long as we're getting that at least twenty-five thousand from you. Let's see, twenty-twenty, I think we hear a common comment through everybody is, "We, we made it work. We made it work, and we made it work." One thing that we did miss out on a lot of was our educational programs, a lot of our face-to-face, which we will be hitting hard, and we're already planning a couple of programs. Our Bottom Line Conference is set to be held in August, and that focuses on soil health. And that will, that's actually a multi-county project with Kearney County, so that'll be held in Kearney County. It's a two-day event. Our other project that we're working on right now is our Ag Women of the Heartland Program, which we originally started in, in tune with the Beef Empire days, so it's kind of weird this time of year not being a part of that. But there's a lot going on out on the farms at this time of year, so it's hard to get anyone to, to attend at that time. But we are working well with the new research and extension agents and got a great program set up for next February. So that's kind of where we're headed there. We have, I want to say as far as boots on the ground and conservation on the ground, our numbers haven't changed. Twenty, COVID didn't change that. The needs were still there. We still need to address conservation. It will always be something that we need to adapt, change, make to fit our local needs. And that's one of the comments I made on our last page of the questionnaire is, every year, we can't say that our resource needs this year are going to be the same needs that we have next year. So every year, we take the time to look at what's happening in the county. What do we need to address? We've got a lot of septic issues going on right now. That has been, for the last couple of years, been something that we haven't had enough funds to help with. That is funding that we do get from the state level that we're able to help county residents with failing septic systems, and we don't ever have enough funds for that. Usually when it's an emergency situation, money's gone already. We also do some cost sharing on our other conservation practices, our terrace rebuilds, waterways. Playas are a big thing right now. How can we, what can we do to help recharge our aquifer? So playas are a big thing right now. So kind of go back to who we are and what we do. We are a board of five elected supervisors from the county. I am the one employee that they have, the district manager, so I oversee all the day-to-day activities. Everything gets approved through the board. We do have two new board members on board. Unfortunately, they're, most of them, Andy's the only one that made it in from the field today. The others are all out in the field right now, other than Linda, who works at the courthouse. And then we also did get a change in our NRCS partner, Amanda Shaw, who's been there for years, has retired. So we got Casey Robinson in, and she's looking to switch things up a little bit. And one of the big things that she's going to want to push is our local work group, and that's a meeting that we have once a year. And we try to invite all of our county, the entire county's invited. But one problem we have is getting the word out that it's happening, also the time. And that's where you guys can come in and speak about any priorities or lapse in resource needs that we need to address. That's very important in our federal programming that we have, as well as our local program. You know, we, we're here to serve the community and make sure that if they've got a need that we're not seeing, that we're addressing it. So I'm short and sweet.
You are short and sweet. I appreciate that.
Yes.
I have a couple of quick questions.
All right.
We'll turn it over to the board. The twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand figure you, you mentioned is that you need, there's a term in the law, I'm going to share, you and I know it very well, but for those who might be out in TV land watching, it's called maintenance of effort, and, and the county has to show, we're required to show a support in order for you to get your state matching funds. So that becomes somewhat important, right? Did I say that right, Mr. County Administrator? My question I ask every year, generally of Andy, so I'm going to aim at Andy and let you answer.
Okay.
Is there ever going to come a time when you look carefully at combining Finney County with Kearney County offices or Scott County, as we did with, with the Extension Services? To me, it seems like it would be a practical application.
I see, I see what you're saying, and especially on the outside looking in, it does, and I see it works well for the extension. The problem I see with it is the lack of the local voice. Kearney County doesn't have the same resource needs we have. We have a, you look at what kind of soil do we have compared to what Kearney County has? What kind of water problems do they have compared to what Finney County has? If you combine them, then you are kind of losing that local, that local voice. You still kind of somewhat have it, but you're, you're losing some. Now, I will tell you that we, our office personnel, the numbers have dropped because counties are working together when it comes to strengths and weaknesses, you know? If we've got one person who's better at doing the educational programs and another person who's better at the QuickBooks, then we're going to feed off of each other through, across the county lines, but we're still separate entities because we want to keep that local. I can tell you, you talk about sailing in the water.
At one time, we're a hundred and five different districts that like you represent. I don't think that's true anymore. I think some have combined.
There's, some of the smaller ones up in the, the northeast region have combined. And I'll tell you, if you talk to any of those district managers, they wish they weren't. They do.
Agree to disagree, can't we?
Right.
Thank you, Carmen. Anyone else? Then I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, I mean, we take this budget under advisement?
Second?
I have a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All right?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks. Thank you, Andy. You did, you did well. You need to take a break? Let's, let's take a ten-minute, ten-minute break. Do you mind, Andy? Ten-minute break.
Good morning. Thanks for taking a break right before me. I did hand out the budget request document. Each of you should have one of these at your spot. The board opted not to increase any of the contributions from the members for 2022. We also didn't increase it in 2021, so we've been able to hold the budget fairly steady throughout the last few years. As always, we like to remind you that what we do, what you've tasked us with, is growing the valuation of the county. That is the, the largest indicator of whether or not we're doing our job. And on the, the first chart there on your second page clearly shows that the efforts of economic development and the partnerships that we've utilized have absolutely served to grow the real property value, which is the only valuation piece that we have any control over. Obviously, we have no control over oil and gas, nor do we really have any control over the state-assessed utilities. So the fact that we've continued to grow the real valuation has protected our taxpayers greatly over the last several years. Priority budget performance, we, we like to remind you that in 2015, our breakouts looked very different than they do now, and since then, we, we did do away with an administrative position and instead replaced that position with someone who's actually with someone who's actually engaged in primary goal activities. That person is now Steve Kotrell. And Steve is half time. He works three afternoons and two mornings each week. He has been, as you all know, he is a licensed engineer and he brings a significant amount of value, especially as we're looking at opening up some additional areas for development, both housing and industrial. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have about our budget and what our goals look like. As you can imagine, the next year will be a continued focus on housing and workforce. Those are the two biggest challenges we're facing. And the only two things that can really stimulate our growth at this point really relate to those human amenities. So when we're talking about the worker, we have to manage the entire worker. So housing and childcare are going to continue to be primary focus of the organization.
Housing, childcare, and workforce. That's the answer.
Housing and childcare to serve the workforce. Obviously, workforce is a standalone need that we focus on consistently.
Any questions or comments?
She's not going to ask a question. I can't let you off the hook.
Hi, I want you to ask questions.
What, I know we talked about this during your annual review, but where are you on your big housing projects? What are the current most?
Yeah, so the Lost River subdivision is the, is 67 acres. That is the last piece, for reference, the last piece of Kaplinger property that was available within the community, kind of just west of campus, north of Pioneer. And that is divvied up into multiple phases for the rural housing incentive district tool. Their first phase is well underway right now as far as the planning and getting that in place. The city commission has already taken up the RHID and we're in the waiting period now for that. That will be a huge subdivision that was originally slated to just be single family, lots and lots of single family. We were going to get less than 200 total units out of that 67 acres. When we met with them, we redesigned that to include higher density as you went further to the, to the north. And in doing that, we've been able to increase to almost 400 housing units just by changing up density and not just quantity, but looking at the diversity of housing that we see the demand for in the community. We're continuing to work with them, obviously, to get them through the process, but we're also working on some projects west of Garden City, between Garden City and Holcomb out in the development envelope. That's probably our next big shot at some pretty significant higher density, lower cost housing to get into the county. And you'll be hearing plenty about that in the coming months, as you are well aware. And then the other section that we're looking at is continuing to grow north and east in that higher level housing. So, you know, the housing study calls for housing needs at all levels, and there's certainly opportunity to continue to build that 250,000-plus home as we go to the north and east where the kind of natural development will take place.
The project west of Texocan, where is that going?
Yeah, so that is a project that unfortunately is a little bit tied up right now, as you're aware, with some legal concerns. I did visit with the developer on that last week, and he suggested that he's continuing to look for opportunities to get that funded and continuing to work with the corporate partnership to ensure that they get that housing built. So we certainly hope that happens, and we'll do whatever we can to assist. We also do have, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to cut you off, but the Hunter's Glen project that we've talked to you about previously on North Third Street, that project did get their initial approval through the USDA, which is very exciting. So that allows them to go for the full application and again requires the additional funding that we've come to you about for that project. And I did send an email to Mr. Reese and Ms. Lohmeyer, but I haven't heard back how, how we're going to go forward with that. But he has been approved to continue with that application. For a reminder, that one provides a lot of housing in that ag worker, quote unquote, ag worker sector. But the important part of that is that it does control their rent and utility costs, keeps those below a certain percentage of their total income.
Bill?
Yes, there would be a chat study in '22. Is that a?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one for '22. Will you be part of the group that facilitates that, or is that just?
No, we do that entirely. That all comes through Finney County Economic Development. Yes, there always has. We do that completely. This year, we have asked for a full reboot of that study, and we've asked them to come back to the community. The good news is RDG Planning is who has always done our housing study. They're also doing the statewide housing assessment that's underway right now. So they're going to have a really good feel for all of the counties around us as well, which I think will be helpful as they look at ours. But as you are well aware, we really need them to identify the unincorporated areas of the county as the housing-rich, that there would be opportunities to put housing in the county that would serve the needs of the workforce for both Holcomb and Garden City. So that's the real push that we're putting out to them. They're aware of that, and they're coming with the con, you know, the idea that that's very important to us to make it available to utilize the RHID in the county as well.
Kind of following up on what Larry mentioned, timeframe between when a developer or you identify a property for housing development, from day one to livable, what's, what's, what's been our average, two years?
Yeah, you know, to build out, much longer than that, obviously, to first units, I would say honestly, we're, we're probably on average 12 to 14 months. It's, it's very challenging, we get that. But as we're, you know, where we're at now, we don't really have any existing infrastructure available. So Lost River is probably the closest that we've been with, with property that has infrastructure, at least super handy to it in a long time. But even then, it takes a significant amount of time to get through the planning and then, you know, to get through the RHID process itself. So it's several months, even, you know, if you look at Chapel Heights, that, that's a subdivision that's working very well, and they're, you know, they're on phase four now. But even then, when we quote unquote, open a new phase, we're still several months from infrastructure lots being available for the builders to get in and start building. So very challenging. You know, we've, we've talked about it for the last decade, that housing was gonna be the bugaboo, and we weren't, we weren't wrong.
Challenge, but the childcare is worse, is it not? Do we have any major?
They're both bad. They're both bad. Certainly childcare is, is more of a challenge just because there, there is no private solution for it. Housing, there's a private solution, and so we can address multiple subdivisions at one time, and we have a lot of various influx of cash coming into that from the various developers. With childcare, there's, there's no influx of cash, so it's something we have to figure out as a community, and we're going to have to, we're going to have to pony up at some point. The funds have to come from somewhere to launch it. We do have it designed to be sustainable, but it has to be launched. Yeah. Uh huh. I only have one other thing I'd like to share, and this is not for you to take up today, but certainly one of the things we've discussed, when you approve, when the county commission originally approved funding for economic development in the county, it was approved at a quarter mill. That was in 1988. That's not been readdressed since that time. We would, we would suggest with what's happening with tax let and such, that you give some consideration to perhaps increasing that dedicated mill that you do, just because anything additional over what you fund to our budget is pretty discretionary for you. When you put it into that deal closing fund, it allows you an opportunity to draw on those funds for projects such as Farmland Road that are supporting economic growth. So I have a memo for you. I'll pass it around. If you have questions, you're welcome to ask them. If you'd rather follow up at a different, different time, just let me know, and we can do that.
Quarter mill would represent about a quarter million?
About 130,000.
Okay. What kind of figure you were going to put on it? Okay, we need to take action on, on the county economic development's budget request.
Need a motion, Mr. Chairman? I move that we take this budget under advisement.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. Not all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? That passes. And next is a board, a board appointment recommendation, and I, we have some correspondence and I think some discussion from some county commissioners here, so.
Well, I know. Oh, okay. Well, just looking, looking down the list of people that applied for this, you know, it's, it's kudos to the economic development folks, you know. We're always trying to get people to step up to the plate, and here they've got a whole handful of folks that were very well qualified. So it, you know, it's a tough decision. I would, I would, you need a motion now, or you want me to just keep discussing?
Discuss, and then do, make some leverage.
Well, I, Mr. Chairman, if you're looking at me, I, I would echo what Larry just said. We've got six qualified names. What I did was I went through the names and tried to look at what, what are we, what kind of a void do we have on the board and so forth? And Tom was a great representative on the board from a financial perspective and being able to look at, at spreadsheets and that kind of thing. And I appreciated all of his time and effort until his death on that board. So no question that there's qualified candidates, and I've narrowed it in my mind to a couple of them, but they're, they're all qualified.
Well, I see that each of them bring a particular talent, and, and all of those talents might be handy, but this can be a tough decision, so. Bill, do you have anything to offer?
Well, no, it's a very talented group. I, I mean, Jeff Carrier has other fish to fry with trying to get our hospital ship righted, so I was able to strike him summarily, although I think he's a great guy and quite talented. I'll just raise a topic, and it is one of discussion within my own profession at the national level, and that is often groups are non-representative of our population. The pejorative word that the women use is mantle. I don't know if you've ever heard that term, which is a panel of all men, and usually it's all white men. So I feel like, I'd like to break the mantle personally and support Vicki for this position, but more than her sex is that she's extremely well qualified.
Is that a motion or just a suggestion?
I don't want to preempt your prerogative as the chair. I didn't know if this was going to be for appointment today, or we were going to pursue interviews, so I defer to you and the board.
There'll be a discussion that we can have and make that decision whether to make that appointment today or.
I just have to echo every, what everybody else has been saying, that we have an incredibly talented group of individuals here. This is not particularly easy, and it's going to be interesting to see how you.
We could put six in the hat and draw the.
That's what I was wondering, which is going to get to secret ballot or draw out of a hat? I'm just curious how you're going to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I, you know, I'd like to, to say that, you know, I would be supportive of Stuart Nelson. He has recently sold his architectural firm and would have the time to devote to the, to the board. I appreciate Dr. Clifford's comments about that person, but I would hate to lose that person off the planning commission is what, you know, she's doing an awful good job there, and that's, you know, that would, you know, I hate to rob another.
And I would agree.
Well, I'm, I'm asking, do you want to present a motion now, or do we want to take this under?
Well, I'll present a motion. I move that we appoint Stuart Nelson to the economic, to the county economic development board.
Point, point of order. We don't get the final choice. Lana's board gets.
We're nominating to the.
Right, you write the recommendation to the FCEDC board, and then the FCEDC board has the ultimate authority to, to approve or to send it back to you to ask for a separate recommendation, right?
I would, to get it on the table, I would second the motion.
Motion, second now, discussions available?
I, I think Stuart's eminently qualified. There's no, no doubt about it, given his background. We're very familiar with his talent and integrity, and I think he'd bring a lot to the economic development board. I, I understand Larry's concern with taking Vicki out of the very key position right now.
Any other discussion? Well, we have a motion in a second, so I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of nominating Stuart to that position, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? There's your recommendation. All right, folks, can't do everybody?
I didn't vote, yeah, abstain.
So, okay, you what?
I abstain.
You abstained, okay. Motion at four. Zero. Thank you.
Yep, that will go before the FCEDC board at their next meeting, which is June 22nd, and we'll let you know how that goes.
Problem to have.
You know, we were super excited, again, not just with the quantity of the people who applied, but the quality of those folks, and the fact that they were willing to step up and be a part of something that we think is pretty important for the community really made us feel very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy and Vicki, thanks for your interest. We appreciate that. We really do, so, thanks. Okay, next up, Roxanne. I saw you in the back of the room somewhere.
I wanted to address a couple of things with you. One of those things comes under question. In the first page of your packet that you have there, you'll see a document that looks somewhat like this.
Can I see them here?
Yes, sir, it should be right at the very front, yes. And so I wanted to address to you, I know that there have been some questions about the reporting of the transient tax. So there are two ways that those numbers are generated. Obviously, through the state, there's a fiscal year, that being June to July. So that story looks very differently depending on what timeframe you're looking at that. So I wanted to point out to you that these are the last three years' numbers. You have the fiscal year, June to July, or July to June, excuse me, and then, of course, the January to December number. As you can see, like I said, those numbers are drastically different. The story is usually much better. Last year, it was the opposite, which in 2020 we expected. I mean, everybody was under that same umbrella of we were surviving. So as you heard earlier with everybody else, yeah, we got through it. We made it. So our economic impact, I wanted to also talk to you a little bit, when we're giving you those economic impact numbers, as to the value of events and, and dollars bringing into the community. Heads and beds is a very important part of that. That's the transient tax, that is where it comes from. But it is not the only variable that we look at. We look at all aspects of it. Are they going to come in and stay in our hotels? Are they going to be shopping in our community? Are they going to be attending our events? Are they going to eventually maybe move here? Are we highlighting our community in the best light? So I just wanted to touch base with that, that I had a resident late, not too long ago, tell me that the transient tax and the, what we do was just about putting heads and beds. And I just want to dispel that rumor that every aspect of the leisure and hospitality industry is important to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. So also, I wanted to let you know that at the state level, wildlife parks and tourism is nomad. Tourism has moved over to the Department of Commerce. We had been there for 25 years, moved over with Governor Brown back, and now back under Lieutenant Governor and Secretary Tolan, which I think is great. He realizes the value of those outside dollars, and we have a direct seat at the table, whereas 25 years ago, that was not the case. We were a subsidiary of a subsidiary of a subsidiary. So we are now direct reports to Secretary Tolan. So we are now direct reports to, uh, Secretary Tolan and now Lieutenant Governor Tolan, so dual seats there. But wanted to let you know that that is, um, very important to us as a tourism industry, just for the simple fact of them understanding the value of tourism as an economic driver for the communities that we live in. Um, I wanted to talk to you some about this book. Every year I bring this to you. This is, um, Tourism Economics, the third-party group that we hire, the state actually hires to break down the value of tourism in every community. And so I love this because it's somebody else telling every, us how great we are or how not great we are. Um, so, and where our areas of concern are, where our areas of work are. So if you will look on page, I'm sorry, I got to put the readers back on. Page four, that highlights the key findings. So visitor spending has surged in the latter part of the decade, up thirty-eight percent since two thousand and fifteen, reaching a hundred and twenty-two millions in twenty nineteen. Now we know next year's report is going to be vastly different for twenty twenty and these are generated. Basically when I present to you, it looks like it's two years behind, which is about twelve months behind. Um, obviously the employment generator, employment supported by visitor spending is almost ten percent of the entire county, eight point seven percent. And the physical contributions that leisure and hospitality dollars make is ten million in state and local taxes. That I think is significant. And if you will turn with me, and I'm just going to skim over some highlights on this and let you look at this at your leisure. Um, on page nine, we're going to talk about jobs. If you look at the very bottom paragraph of that, you'll see that seventy per, seventy percent of all jobs generated in the last decade since two thousand and eleven were in the leisure and hospitality industry. We're talking about the restaurants, the hotels, the shopping centers, anything that serves a visitor in our community. Which as we know, when it serves a visitor in our community, it's better quality of life for our community as well. Then I wanted to take you again to the very last page twenty. And like I said, these are just highlights. There's much more information in this book for you to look at at your leisure. And anybody out there in TV land who wants to, uh, come in and question me or get a copy of this, I would be happy to visit with them. Um, on that last page twenty, Fannie County visitor spending totaled a hundred and twenty-two million, which we knew. But that placed us tenth in the entire state. Per leisure and hospitality dollars, we're up from two years ago, we were number eleven. So I'm very excited about that when you look at that kind of growth. And then, um, you look down there and it says nine point three percent would be the unemployment rate without tourism. Um, we kind of saw that last year. Unemployment jumped up past that six percent mark and so, um, a lot of those were those leisure and hospitality jobs. A lot of those haven't come back yet. Um, some of that business is booming. Um, my hotels are having a wonderful time. However, they, like everybody else, can't find enough staffing. So we've been trying to work with our hoteliers on that avenue. Um, we did hold a job fair in conjunction with, uh, First Fridays. And I think one of my facilities, um, hired a couple of people right on the spot. So, um, if you're out there and you're looking for a job, get a hotel or a restaurant, they're all hiring. So, um, then I want to go in-house to what we're doing in our office. Um, so last year, at the end of the year, I mean, last year was just horrible, as you well know. The bottom dropped out of it, the hotels basically were down to nothing in business. At the end of the year, we invested very heavily, once everything started open up, in the marketing. And I think we're seeing the rewards of that marketing now as we have a massive amount of traffic coming through our office now requesting information. Had a gentleman from Germany, I had two from California. Um, we've had multiple people from Colorado come into our office. Um, office traffic is not generally what we get. Usually we get phone calls, emails, those kinds of things. So I know those people are here and they're spending the night. Um, and that's the people who are contacting us. So how many more are there? Uh, transient tax last month was up twenty-seven percent. Um, as of last year, ending the year, basically thirty-eight percent down. Um, so I'm very excited for the trends that's coming. Um, awful, I've, uh, excuse me, sorry. And then this, this year we started a blog. So if you get the opportunity, please go to our website and sign up for that blog. We have some very talented writers working for us and are coming up with some very interesting perspectives on Fannie County. So, um, I think it's one of those things is very, um, beneficial as a community member. There's a lot of stuff on there you don't know and would be great weekend trips for you to get out and see what's going on in your own community. Um, we're also, like I said, seeing the increase in traffic. We're also seeing huge increase to our website and the digital parts that we're doing. We've changed some of our marketing, um, to facilitate, uh, the Hulu and those places where kids are streaming as opposed to millennials stream more than they watch traditional television. So if I can get in front of them on what they're on constantly, that's what we've worked at really hard this year. And Holly's done an amazing job at that. She's our marketing director. Um, our Facebook, um, likes are up, our interaction is amazing. So, um, also in recruiting, in twenty twenty-three, I wanted to note that we will be hosting the N J C A A, uh, Division One Women's Golf Championship. We do have a really large announcement coming up once I get a final, there's a final meeting that needs to happen, but it's secured. And so we'll be making that announcement to you shortly. Um, and then, of course, we continue to reach out to, um, those events that fit our community. Our problem is, is we're running out of facilities. Um, Melissa's doing a terrific job, um, at facilitating that. Melissa just recently was in Topeka last week in a visit with Secretary Tolan. She sits as an executive member of the Sports Commission, um, called Sports Kansas. And they were visiting about how do we bring in those sports events to our, our state? So again, another discussion about those outside dollars coming in. We know the value of the outside dollar because it doesn't cost us any housing, it doesn't cost us any education, it doesn't, you know, it only brings in benefit to our communities. Um, and then we'll talk a little bit about Brittany, who has become the printing queen. All of this stuff was printed in-house. Um, once we, um, lost the eighty thousand dollars that went into Economic Development Center, we kind of thought about, okay, where's an area where we can reduce our cost? Printing was very, very costly for us. Now, the good thing about it is we decreased our costs, we increased our services, which I was really excited about. Because now I have the ability not only to print our own visitor's guides, our own rack cards, all of the stuff that you see downstairs, Brittany printed for us. Um, but also when it comes to those events, they also have the availability to utilize that printer. Um, all of the COVID stuff that you, the posters that were out last year were printed on our printer. So we were glad to help out the county in that manner as well. We are. So, yes, we're, we're pretty, we're pretty excited for a lot of this stuff that we're doing. So, um, we're reaching outside of what I thought that this printer would do. And we're, uh, Brittany's becoming quite proficient. I'm a little worried about losing her, she may end up investing in her own printer and leaving me. So I would, I would entertain any questions that you might have about the budget. And if you'd like, I have a board member who is here also.
I, uh, again, I'm going to ask my two questions and then turn it over to the board. One of them actually questions, comment, the, the monies you're seeking in your budget request are different from all of the other budget requests we had today. In that the other budget requests were monies that are derived from ad valorem or property tax.
Correct, or sales tax.
Is strictly transient guest tax. And there are some real limits on what it can be used for, but one of them is to fund your operations.
Right, we are a hundred percent funded by the transient tax. Um, there are some other deferments made out of that, so we are not the sole recipient of the transient tax. But that is our sole source of income, yes, sir, you're correct.
And the other co, uh, comment or question I have is not to be argumentative, but I, I guess I respectfully disagree just a little bit with your, your unemployment numbers. I know that, um, the restaurant and the hospitality industry is having a hard time. But the hard time is also demanding higher wages than some of them want to, to pay. But, but what I see for unemployment in Fannie County is not nearly the figure you quoted, it's about a third of that, so.
It is now, I was talking in twenty twenty at the height of the unemployment.
All right, okay, thank you. Anybody else, Duane?
Uh, I guess my projection, the Garden City Rapids Pool slash Water Park.
Yes.
Do you see quite a bit, uh, out of area attraction to that or is it's going to be?
Now, that's a Matt and Jennifer question. I see a lot of investment. We have a soul campaign running just for indoor and outdoor water. Just because we knew we would have the water park opening this summer, we knew people were going to be wanting itching to get out of their homes. And so the counties and the states surrounding us, we hit all of those very, very hard. So I think that you'll see a huge influx of people, um, at the water park, at both of them. Um, I think the, if it's a rainy day, they're going to fill up over at the indoor one. And if it's not, you're going to see, I drove by the water park the other day. I think probably just in that single day, you probably have more usage than you had last year in any given month. It was packed.
Do some of these people spend the night or is this pretty much?
Absolutely, we're seeing some people spend the night. Like I said, some of that traffic coming through the office. Um, we've had a lot of interest in the Santa Fe Trail and a lot of those people are families, um, and homeschoolers and they're stopping and utilizing the wa, water park as well.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead, Lana.
Well, first of all, uh, since I'm the liaison for, from this board, uh, I will tell you that, uh, Robert's been to a couple of meetings and has passed initiation, uh, in that group. But it's an interesting group, but it's a good group. Uh, I, I applaud, uh, C V B for the, uh, uh, board membership makeup. And we got one, one person in there that's really astute with regard to financials and several others. Uh, of course, it's a mix of hoteliers and non-hotelliers. Uh, but, uh, a couple of, of, uh, other things, uh, and then one to, uh, uh, to address what Duane just asked. During, uh, the spring, uh, and these weren't overnight, uh, visitors, but during the spring at Parrot Cove, there were buses from Colorado and so forth on their field trips, uh, when they did their spring field trips with their students. And, and so, yes, I think because of those contacts with our community, some of them are going to be back with their families. Uh, and especially now that we have outdoor, uh, water, uh, as well. My question is this regarding, uh, the unemployment or the employment issue, I, I should say. And I know this is not, uh, necessarily, well, it could be a state level, uh, thing, but not necessarily a county thing. But there's all this discussion about raising minimum wage at the federal level particularly, but even at the state level, they've talked about that. But wouldn't that be a, put the hoteliers and the restaurants at a disadvantage when they're using part-time help? And some of it's student help and, and so forth, uh, or not disadvantaged, but wouldn't that be a hindrance to them? Uh, finding the people and their budgets and, and all of that? And, and my, the point of my question is, has your state group addressed what that minimum wage increase would do to the tourism? I'm talking more globally here, the tourism, uh, industry.
Yes, and actually I'm glad you asked that question. Um, last week at the beginning of the week, um, I sit on the Tourism Industry Association in Kansas as the vice president of that board. Um, we did have a meeting with the governor, um, addressing just that, the unemployment. And, um, basically, um, how that is affecting the hospitality industry. And it's not just the hospitality industry, it is industry across the board. And the bad thing is, is if you're already on a low percentage of profitability, um, raising unemployment, um, I mean unemployment, excuse me, raising salaries to that minimum wage of fifteen dollars an hour, it's going to either, it's going to cause one of two things in the perspective of us as a group. It's going to either raise the cost of services or it's going to lower the productivity of services. Um, if I'm already on a pretty slope, uh, pretty slim profit margin, I'm going to make it work as well I can with the skeleton crew that I have. Or I'm going to increase the cost of my product. And that's kind of what it boils down to at the end of the day. So are we doing anybody any favors if we raise it to fifteen dollars an hour? I mean, I think that obviously, um, there are some areas of the United States that need to be at fifteen dollars an hour to have a livable wage. I think, um, that needs to be decided state by state.
And business by business.
And business by business, um, because I, you need to be able to have that flexibility. Obviously, I don't know of many people who are paying minimum wage. Um, everybody I know that in, in visiting with, in my industry, is paying above that. Obviously, in the, the restaurant industry, that's a different, that is a whole different beast because now you have tip servers and those kind of things. And I know, um, a lot of you know that I started, when I moved to Fannie County, I started at Widow McGee's, which is Barron's now. I made more in tips than I ever made in salary. I went to work at Tyson as an office manager. I made more in tips on a weekend than I got paid at Tyson for a week. So, um, yeah, I, I just, I wrestle with that one. I think, yeah, more than three dollars and sixteen dollars, three dollars an hour. But that was twenty-plus years ago, guys.
Well, and, and, uh, we know, we know from our, we know from our sheriff, you know, what we're losing to Tyson because they're at twenty-one something and.
Right, and then Tyson is losing to National Beef because they're paying twenty-two dollars and a three thousand dollar sign-on bonus.
But again, I think it's up to businesses to, to, you know, whatever supply and demand will, will.
Correct.
I'm a believer in that. And then quickly, I have a grand, seventeen-year-old granddaughter that if they, not in this county, but if they raise minimum wage to fifteen dollars, she may be out of a job.
Exactly.
She's in the restaurant and she, you know, works tips and, and pay. My other question, and it ties to what Dave I think, uh, was, uh, mentioning. C V B has particular statutes and so forth that it has to follow as far as. And, and you've addressed it partially, as far as how the transient guest tax funds can be used. Am I correct in that statement that you have specific guidelines on how the monies can be used?
Yes, I believe on your, the resolution is on, uh, the document that I gave to you, I believe it's twelve, twelve ninety-two. Um, and I'm not sure about those numbers, but yes, there is a state statute on, um, how transient tax dollars are to be utilized.
That was my understanding, yeah, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anything else? Need a motion, please?
I would, uh, move that we take this, uh, request under advisement.
I'll second.
Motion and a second's been received, any discussion?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Whoever say aye. Stick around just a minute. Who, who's representing the, the, uh?
Fair Board?
Fair Board.
That's me, you got me.
Let's do that right quick.
Let's do it.
We have an audit at eleven o'clock. Can you get it done in ten minutes?
Uh, probably even shorter than that. And I do want to apologize, there is a blank spot on your budget. And, um, basically I forgot to copy and paste. So my apologies.
Right ahead, Roxanne.
So the Fair Board is on track. We are going to have a fair this year. It is going to be a more normal fair. Um, it will not be, we are not stalling animals this year. Um, outside of that, everything else is going to go as planned. We can have spectators and visitors and we're pretty pumped, we're pretty excited about that. Um, as you know, you've appointed some new Fair Board members and we're very excited about them. My goal is this time next year to have that board fully staffed. I'm going to hit up some coffee groups and see if anybody wants to be on the board.
Remains fairly static?
Um, the request is exactly the same as it has been in the past, yes, sir.
Fairly static, so, anything else you want to say before we take a motion?
Nope, we just really am, um, really, really are grateful for the investment that you guys make in the Fannie County Fair.
You sure filling in for Carol? And now to accept a motion?
Well, I would make the motion, but before I do that, if you haven't received your brochure about funding for the fair, here are a couple of them, uh, printed at C V B. And you can start anywhere from a thousand up to ten thousand. We would, they would appreciate your.
We would be happy to take your check, sir.
And I, but I would, uh, I would move that we. And I, but I would, uh, I would move that we take this request under advisement. Mr. Chairman?
Do you have a motion?
I'll second.
Ever wish a second? Quick question, didn't you last, last fair have about 1,200 4-H kids?
So I am not sure about that number. I know there are 144 4-H families in Fannie County. Now, how many of those were outside of our community? I could not answer.
Be nice to have that figure, and then when somebody wants to discuss the Fair Board monies.
Well, and I'll tell you that I know a lot of people see the fair as a 4-H and FFA. Um, so I guess my perspective is a little bit different. I think the fair is for utilizing and highlighting everything that the community has to offer with a focus on the agriculture. So, um, yeah, I'm a little bit different than a lot of individuals participating in the fair.
You're not gonna have a livestock auction?
We are gonna have a livestock auction, so get your checkbook out.
They're limiting the number of livestock.
The number of livestock has increased. We tagged a record number of animals, um, this year. So I'm pretty excited about what that's gonna look like. We're just not gonna house them overnight. They're not gonna be able to be stalled overnight. So that will be one aspect of the fair that won't be the same. But going into 2022, everything's gonna be peachy wonderful.
I would like to warn you commissioners that as a member of the liaison to the Fair Board, I have volunteered our services. We will be called for mutton judging and goat judging this.
We were thinking dunk tanks.
Whatever, but goat busting or whatever, we will be called for assistance.
How many of you guys you're volunteering show up for that assignment, too?
Now, if it's 100 degrees, I would do the dunk tank.
Okay.
Let's, let's take a vote.
Anything less than 100 degrees, you know.
I'll put a heat fan on it. Be very careful. [laughing]
All those in favor of taking this budget request under advisement, say aye.
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 Thank you, gentlemen.
I see Colleen, and I see that we have about six minutes until, uh, something is scheduled. Can you do it in six minutes?
Don't threaten me with a good time over here. I'll get it done here. Okay, so, um, our presentation should be coming up here in just a minute. Um, so the data I'm sharing with you today was updated last Friday evening. We'll, we'll release our new situation report likely tomorrow morning. That has the difference in numbers, so we currently have 37 active cases. We have one individual currently hospitalized and 50 residents that have passed away due to the virus. Last week, we moved the community risk level of moderate due to an additional COVID-19 death, as well as a slight increase in hospitalizations and positive cases. We're currently not incredibly concerned with the increase in my, or minor fluctuations, and numbers are to be expected. However, we do encourage our community members to take an active part in keeping our numbers down through receiving their COVID-19 vaccine. If you haven't already received the vaccine, continue to wear a mask in public places and, uh, practice social distancing. In the next few slides, you'll see our trends over the year. As you can see, the hospitalization still continued to remain low. Positive cases as well, we did have a couple of days of increased, um, cases where we reported in one week 17 positives, which was up from the consistent 10 to 12 of the weeks prior. Um, it was lower than that, but then we had kind of a 10 to 12 and then a 17. But it's an outlier at this point. Um, we are back down to that under 10. Still keeping a steady, um, trend of leveled out, um, in those COVID-19 cases. Our positive, uh, positivity rate as well has decreased, but it's kind of gone back and forth, but still remaining extremely low. And then, let's see, we, you will see our vaccination numbers. Um, from what we've given, so 17,526 total vaccinations. Um, the state is calculating 42.5% of Kansans have received a vaccine thus far. Um, we are currently doing our vaccine schedule consistently Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays of each, um, week for walk-ins and appointments. They can be scheduled through a variety of our methods. We're still doing an online, um, request or also our email, phone call, um, or walking into the health department. We are administering these inside the health department as well. We still have a lower availability of Pfizer vaccines, so we are doing those typically a couple of days a weeks. But we're doing more outreach events with Pfizer since we have the approval of, uh, 12 and older now. Uh, with COVID-19 restrictions released across the country, we have begun to grow our community outreach and education, which includes presenting at Garden City High School regarding, uh, the health department services. We've gone to Food Truck Fridays, um, for vaccination clinics. We've gone to the Garden City High School twice for vaccines. Um, Mary Street Apartments, Fannie County Administration Building, East Garden Village, um, Garden City Community College, Yoyole, Yoyole Asian Market, and we've had weekly radio appearances. We've redesigned our brochures for all of our programs and have ordered some marketing materials to take to presentations, parades, community events, all of our outreach. Um, and we're excited for some other additional, um, outreach we have planned in July with some updates to be released, um, here shortly. Um, for the start of the school year, we're looking at a children's safety and back-to-school event where we collaborate with other organizations. Um, of course, grateful for our community and county partners. Thank you for the time and considered, uh, and your continued support. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Right ahead, questions?
The state percent is 42.5. What, what about our county? Did I miss that percentage?
Um, I didn't put the county, um, because of opening to the 12 to 15-year-olds that increased our numbers. We're at about 52%.
But in the, uh, older group, like commissioners and above?
Over 60%.
Over 60%?
Well, over 60.
Yes, thank you. And how's your capacity at the, uh, Health Department building?
Great. I mean, no issues there. We've been handling it, um, scheduling out. Um, we looked at average, uh, numbers over the last three weeks with a pretty consistent of 30 to 40 a day. So we're running them through our walk-in clinic, and we put out a registration table, um, in our lobby so that when new people come in, they can check in at that, uh, front desk, fill out the paperwork, and then they get funneled immediately to the clinic and then back out for their waiting time.
And the uptake is in children now, or are you seeing that?
We've seen very few, um, still kind of a lower percentage in that. Um, but we've done several little outreach events to try to get out into the community, and we kind of expect an increase in that when we're looking at back-to-school immunizations.
There he is.
I just want to comment, Colleen, I understand you're got a new job.
I did, yes.
And I wanna thank you for going through this last year. My gosh, what a baptism under fire, and you did a great job. And so I really applaud you for your service to Fannie County and Fannie County taxpayers.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I have a question. What would it take to get you to reconsider that decision?
You can't put me on the spot here. A million dollars. Yes!
Remember, this is open session.
Yeah.
Anyway, we appreciate what all you've done, and I'll turn it over to the other guys.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, and, and yes, thank you for what you've done. That, that wasn't probably a line item in your original job description, what, five years ago? Or whenever that?
Yes, sir.
Uh.
It, it falls under the all other duties as assigned, right?
Fine.
Yeah, uh-huh.
Yeah, that's fine. My, my question is this, and, and if I saw correctly on one of those slides that you had toward the end, that your, your educational efforts are not only physical health, but some mental health, uh, education kinds of things. And we know through this last year and a half that mental health, uh, became very prominent in many communities, which are what the isolation and other things brought to that, uh, aspect of our health. The other thing, though, and we heard our new sheriff candidate, uh, express the other night at a meeting, and that is how the drugs are the, probably the number-one issue for law enforcement, and how the drugs lead to so many other things. So, uh, is part of the health department's, uh, education process to help people understand the dangers, uh, of drugs and the, the ill effects of drugs, uh, in, in, in regard to not only their health, but the health of, of others?
Absolutely. I believe that's, um, one of our new initiatives that we'll be focusing on, um, as well as, uh, increased collaborations with other mental health facilities. Um, there's more, uh, funding and directives coming down from the state as well for those. Um, so the more support that that comes down from the state, the better equipped we are to be able to, um, respond, um, here locally, so.
Be a part of that education process?
Yes, and then, um, the Health Coalition did put together the opioid task force that has been running for several years, um, that does, um, it, it, they are comprised of, you know, Compass and the Sheriff's Office and EMS, um, Police Department, those types of, um... So there's always room for improvement, of course, in those aspects.
Thank you for giving me that latitude, Mr. Chairman, and thank you.
All right, Colleen. Bless you, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Teresa's hiding back there somewhere with her cohort. Come forward, ladies. Yeah, do we wanna? You guys?
Would you rather sit?
Would you rather?
It doesn't matter to, to me, but you know.
Bring a couple chairs up here.
Up there, so this is probably fine. Yeah.
What are you asking?
This is fine. This is fine. That's fine with us.
Is that okay with you guys? All right, I was just trying to hit this time schedule, so.
That's fine.
All right, other departments. I see a treasurer's report. Do we have a treasurer?
You got a praiser, you got a praiser and treasurer.
Good morning. I have something to pass out. I'll also be going over the transient guest tax in, in addition to the, the other, um, revenue sources that I put in the packet. So the first one I wanna speak about, um, is the sales tax. So, um, I provided a brief overview of the first five months of this year, what revenue looks like and what it compares to last year. So, just to highlight, so revenue in the first five months of 2021 for sales tax increased $239,576.79 over the same period of 2020. That's about a 10% increase. So we're seeing strong sales tax collections. So in relation to that, um, our bond repayment, we still expect it to, to repay on the same schedule as, as I, um, went over in, um, the, the yearly sales tax meeting earlier this year. So, um, I'll move on to the transient guest tax, which is what I passed out. So I just wanna highlight a couple things. Commissioner Larry Jones asked me to talk about this since, um, since Roxanne was here to talk about their budget. Um, so, um, we received two distributions of the transient guest tax so far from the state of Kansas in 2021. The total distribution so far for 2021 has been $318,110.59. We received $440,399.90 for the first two distributions of 2020. So this is, um, a $122,289.31 decrease from last year. So a roughly 38% decrease. So you can see, we're just not seeing those collections, and so that's related to 2020. Um, the, the second distribution that we received this year would be related to the first quarter of 2021. Okay? Um, so I'll move on to outlining where our property tax collections are. Um, so total tax collections of property tax levied for the 2020 tax year are 94.25% of taxes levied as of 6/4 of 2021. Um, so this is in line with previous years. We're not really seeing a huge drop in relation to COVID. Last year, we did, we did see a higher, really, uh, a higher percent of people not paying on time or, or just maybe not realizing that that tax deadline hasn't, hadn't been extended, um, like the income tax was. So we're going back to pre-pandemic levels now. Um, the last thing I wanna talk about, um, so Fannie County has received $3,541,643.50 appropriated through the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. This is our first half payment. We will receive a second half payment, but I'll defer to Robert about, um, how we're gonna spend that. I'm sure that he'll go over that a little bit or, [laughing] or ask for some input in that, okay? Does anybody have any questions about these numbers, or?
On property tax, uh, a few years ago, we had a property tax sale.
Yes.
I don't know, six, seven years? Are we about due for another one of those?
We are. We, our last tax sale ended in 2019, and actually Linda and I are, are trying to get together to, um, start that process again. Um, with 2020 being what it was, it was, it was not a good year for our taxpayers. And so, um, now that we're out of that pandemic mode and ready to resume business as normal, um, I think it's a, an appropriate time to begin that process again.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Questions?
Thank you.
I told you it'd be quick.
And I see the appraiser, Maria. Morning.
Good morning. It's still morning. Um, I'm not for sure you should have gotten a sheet of paper that kinda looks like this? It kinda gives you the values?
I did. We haven't seen it.
Okay.
It's not in the packet.
I'll read the packet.
Okay, 'cause I did it as an attachment. Okay. Um, our valuation is up from 2020 to 2021 by $837,899 in assessed values. Um, overall, uh, it is a little bit of an increase, and that's, the majority of it is on the real estate side. Oil and gas did go down, um, from last year. Uh, personal property has kind of always been a little bit on the trend down, so that's down a little bit. I did get the state assessed values from Dory, and, um, th- those are down also. So the increase in the real estate is what actually, um, has in- increased it this year. So kinda what Lana referred to earlier, as far as keeping up on bringing in, um, kinda on the real estate side, it has. And I went back and, um, I did look, I like the average assessment in the last four years. We've been really consistent. Um, our valuation, our, our average in like the last four years is like the $498,780.64. Um, like I said, our valuation this year, um, is $499,499,972.337. Million, yes. $972,337, sorry. Yes. Okay, there it is. Um, so, like, um, kinda Lana referred to it, and I was, and that's kinda what I saw is the real estate values actually have helped because we've had such a decrease in the oil and gas. Like, for instance, I know for 2020, we were at $15,878,061 for oil and gas. And for 2019, I think it was like $31 million in that. So it took like a 50% drop in 2020, of course, because of the pandemic stuff. Uh, but it kinda has lowered even some a little bit. So, um, that increase in valuation is on the real estate side. Um, we do have, um, some commercial properties pending at Board of Tax Appeals, and that values, um, about $1830,401. We don't know what they're seeking in valuation, so the potential increase could, um, go back down to hopefully, uh, last year's value. But, uh, a lot of that is 'cause we don't know what they're asking for on their values. So we're hoping it's not that much of a difference, but, um, that could be a potential loss there. So I'm hoping that we kinda may even out or just still have a little bit of an increase there. Um, I think that's about all I have for you, if you have any questions.
Looking at, we're at this $499,972 figure. Does that translate to one mil equals $499,000? $1,000?
This is the assessed value. I'm trying on the mil levy, it's.
We'll actually be pulling the TIF value out of that, so you'll be about 20 million less than that, but that should be pretty, should be pretty close.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
On the state assessed, is that utilities mainly, or is that?
Utilities mainly, and that comes from the state that we don't value those here in Finy County.
The mixture should be different, picture on oil and gas of $60, $70 barrel oil.
Hopefully, so. And that's the other thing, I think our price went up, but production was down, so.
Okay, thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
Now, are we ready for Louis Hooper and Dick, none of whom are here, but I do see Teresa. I'm sorry about.
That's not a problem.
Rather busy schedule.
It's entirely up to you.
Yeah, Adam actually has a presentation, so.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that, so I can see the slides in too, so we know. You all know me, it's Teresa Dazenbrock, for the sake of it. Know you had a busy morning, so we'll go through stuff pretty quickly, but feel free interrupt as we go, and we'll try and answer those questions, but we do have an unmodified auditor's report attached to your financial statements once again this year. It was a single audit, there were no question costs on any of the federal funds and programs, so that's very good job. This year, we had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies to report, so that was an improvement over the prior year. I'm on slide three, actually. Unencumbered cash balances this year, when you're looking at your bound financial statements, hopefully you had those a week or so ahead of time to take a look at. That statement number one is on pages six and seven, to give you your snapshot picture of all the funds within the county. In total, the county funds were about $35.5 million at the end of 2020. That's an increase of just over $1.8 million, and that did include the related municipal entities that are included in your financial statement, so the closeout of the Extension District, the Library, CVB are all in there, so. The general fund, as that's where you do a lot of your operations out of, it increased this year just under $300,000, so. I'm actually on slide four. Looking then at your total unencumbered cash balances across all the funds, the trend over a 10-year picture here, you can see we've had steady growth in our cash balances. There were some increases there in 2014 and 15 that occurred as a result of bombed proceeds that came into the county as you were doing the construction project on the Community Corrections Services Building, so that was going on. Over the 10-year period, the cash balances, unencumbered cash balances in all the funds have increased 15.5 million in that 10-year period, so. The next graph actually then breaks that down for you by type of cash availability. We're looking at your operating fund balances, reserve balances, and your restricted fund balances, and in this presentation, we did exclude the related municipal entities, so you're looking at just those funds that you're directly managing. The, the green bar on the top is the operating funds of the county, that's largely increased in part here in the most recent years due to the tax lid and how you've been having to manage the cash flow of your tax dollars with the tax lid. So with that no longer in place, you might see some change occur there. The reserve funds was down this year largely because of the Special Highway Improvement Fund, as you used up some of those for projects, it brought that balance down. The restricted funds do include your capital project funds, so that increase you see there in 2014 that carried through in 2015, that was as money came in, bond money to use for the Community Corrections Building, that project. The increase you see here in 2020 in that area is from the Spark grant funding. And then overall, some of the increase, especially in the operating funds, which are really where most of your tax levying dollars are located, some of those increases in, in cash balances are also a result of the increases you experienced with the valuation changes.
When you show the blue line for reserve funds, it seems in the past that you, or maybe Gary before you, had a thought or a recommendation on what we should experience reserve-wise as a percentage, is that? It seemed like it was like 25% or no?
That's true, Lon, but typically, when we were talking about that in the budget process, we were talking about the cash reserves in your operating funds, so that would not be part of these monies in the reserves. These reserve funds include your capital improvement reserve, your equipment reserve, some of your building projects, the oil and gas valuation depletion trust funds in there, so.
Sorry about confusion.
No, no, that's.
Yeah, you're right.
Good question, though, but 25 to 30% is usually a good target for those cash balances in your operating side.
Thank you.
Okay, on slide six then, compare, oh, wait a minute, excuse, yeah, that's right, sorry. Slide six, comparing then your receipts and expenditures, here we've narrowed it down, and we're looking at just your operating funds, and we put the trend lined in there, so you can see the receipts have trended pretty parallel with the expenditures over the 10-year here, history period there. On average, receipts have been an average of $32.6 million a year compared to the expenditures, which are averaging just at $32 million a year, so pretty consistent in that. Slide seven is the graph then, pie chart looking at just the receipts of your operating funds here in 2020. The law enforcement was the largest piece of the pie in operations, at just over 31% of total operating receipts. Their receipts are mostly tax dollars. The general fund was the second largest at about 23.5%, with Public Works being the third largest area at about 12% of the total. It's kind of a busy graph because we put the numbers in there with percents and dollars, so you had that readily available as you were looking at that, but this is all of those operating funds that were going into that cash area we looked at. Looking at the 10-year history on just the general fund, this year, we've also added to it the law enforcement funds, because as you remember in 2017, when the tax lid went into play, the law enforcement was separated out, and in 2018, the County Attorney's Office went into that fund also. So to make the graph more comparative and from the earlier years, we've added those on, you'll see them in the different color there, starting in 2017. So in 17, in total, the receipts stayed pretty consistent to 2016, 2015. The general fund was a little over 55%, and the law enforcement side was about 45%. When the County Attorney's Office moved into that picture in 2018, it kind of just reversed the graphic. So now, the general side runs about 45% of the total receipts, and the law enforcement funds are running about 55% of the total, so. Yes, yes, because this is just 2020. So this is basically the tax dollars that are required to run that whole operation, law enforcement jail, the County Attorney's Office. We did not do a, although it is at the end of the slides, we didn't do a pie chart of just law enforcement, because 97% of those receipts to operate that fund are tax dollars. Only 3% are coming from fees and other places. Okay, on slide nine then, looking at just the general fund share of the receipts, the makeup of them, 83% in 2020 was coming from tax dollars. You know, everything else stayed pretty consistent, most of it was a plus or minus 1% to 2% change, the licenses and fees were down a couple percentages. That's why taxes at 83%, they were up from 80% the prior year, but since the taxes are so big a piece of the pie, the next chart has that broken down for you by tax source. Property taxes, the ad valorem taxes are the largest part, actually down just a fraction, 56.45% compared to 56.62 the year before. Really, for the most part, everything stayed pretty consistent. Local sales tax was down a minor fraction too this year, 31.5% versus 32.8% last year. So even with all the pandemic, pretty, pretty similar picture to what you've seen. Since ad valorem taxes make up such a big piece of the general fund and the law enforcement fund, some information related to those factors. 10-year valuation, as you're working on your budget, you've probably seen a lot of these numbers already. The trend line is in there and it's been very flat. We've had some increases in 2015, took the big dive in 2016, right when you had to start maneuvering for the tax lid and getting stuff set, so. But then fortunately, after the bottomed out there in 2017, it's been trending back upwards, so the trend's been flat. 2021 is not on here, but it was basically down just a little from where we were at in 2020, and hopefully we'll end up with an increase after what we heard here a little bit ago for this coming year. 10-year average, we've been at $482.2 million in the trend. The mil comparison then on that, and this is for all of your funds, has been an upward trend in the 10-year period, we were at a low in 2012 at about 37 mils, to our high point here in 2020 and 2021 at 48.6 mils. The tax lid, like I said, went into effect there in 2017, so you were using up a few reserves, but still managed to build pretty good cash dollars. On average, the 10-year mil levy has been 41.567 mils. The spread from the high to the low has been 11.6 mils. Now, those mil levy has brought in tax dollars. On this next slide, your receipt comparison, and this is in today's dollars, total for the county. 10-year average is 20 million, we were at a low in 2011 of 16.8 million, to our high point here in 2020 of 23.4, and then you were actually down in 2021 about $100,000, so. An increase of 6.6 million across that 10-year period, so a 39% increase. Comparatively, those tax dollars with some of the area counties, similar size. Population-wise, the six that we've been comparing to in the past, Reno's kind of the outlier there with the higher population and the higher valuation, but the others are pretty close, and you can see the 10-year trend has been pretty consistent for all of those. Valuation-wise, the trends show up a little more here on the next slide, follows the population, other than in Ellis and Ford, those kind of switched around, but you can see for the most part, other than Reno County and Ford County, valuations were down in the last year, the last year being 2020 here. The levy then in those counties, you know, the lowest was Ellis County at 37, just over 37 mils. Finy County was the highest at 48, about 48.5 mils, a spread of 11.3 mils in 2020. But most of the others stayed pretty consistent, or up a little bit, so we were maybe unique in that we were down a little bit that year. Certainly.
The total levy is an interesting graph, maybe one that is more on point would be the dollars with the way the tax lid was, do you have that graph?
I, I don't have that information, we take this from the League of Municipalities, and they don't provide that, but that's something we could go back at some point and calculate and add on to there. Mm-hmm. Right, right, so, so we'll see if we can add that in next year, Dave, so, good point. You know, and here we were comparing just the levies within the county. The next slide we've taken and have combined that so that it's the levy for the, the major city in those counties, because at that point, all the, all of the different taxing units have been consolidated, so you're looking more apple to apple. Now, the only outlier there is that Hayes does not have a community college, so it's considerably lower, because the average of the five community colleges, at least in the last year presented here, that average has been just under 30 mils, so that makes up a good part of that difference. Here, Liberal's the highest at 191 mils, just over 191, with Garden being the lower. In total, I didn't make note of that number, in total, Garden City was at 162.9 mils, so. So that's some of the information behind the tax dollars and the general fund receipts. Switching gears then and looking at expenditures, comparing the expenditures in the general fund with the law enforcement fund added on there, over the 10-year period, you can see it's been fairly consistent with increases in most recent three to four years. Here again, by the time we added the law enforcement, the sheriff, the jail, the county attorney altogether in 2018, it was basically a reversal of the percentages, so that the law enforcement fund is about 55.5% in 2018, about the same in 2020, with the general fund operations being 44.5%, so. So the growth in the expenditures, you can see there is basically been in the law enforcement area, and we have some breakdown on the makeup of the sheriff and the law enforcement county attorney here in a minute. Within the general fund, the expenditures in 2020 are very consistent from the past year. General administrative, general government area, 72% of the total, whereas that was 71% in the prior year. Public safety up a percentage, health and sanitation stayed pretty constant the last three years. Thing that affects those largely is the amount of transfers you make. This year, the transfers were 13% of the total versus 15% in the prior year, so. The law enforcement side, the expenditures in that fund then split, about 80% of it are for. About eighty percent of it are for the sheriff and the, the jail operations. The county attorney is eighteen percent. And then this year, they had some transfers out. That totaled two percent in their fund, so. Eighty percent's been pretty consistent the last three years for the sheriff's office, so. So then, before we get into the management letter, one other area I'd like to point out because you don't see it on a routine basis in your monthly reporting that you get from the treasurer's office, I don't think, is your debt outstanding at the end of the year. The detail on that, if you go looking for it, is on pages eighteen and nineteen in the, the audit report, the financial statements. At the end of the year, your limited obligation bonds were just over three point three million. That's the sales tax bond that's going to mature in two thousand twenty-five, so pays out in four and a half years. The revenue bonds is six hundred and fifty thousand. That's for Sur District number three. It's got twenty-one years yet before it matures in two thousand forty-two. And then the capital leases are just over six million. There's a couple motor graders in there, but the majority of it is for the HVAC system. That's at five point four million and it will mature in eleven years in two thousand thirty-two. Management letter, I'm going to let Kristin touch on some of the highlights. As we noted, there were no material weaknesses though this year. We're not going to go into a lot of detail on these because we're going to meet with the department heads tomorrow morning and go through every comment there. And we've done that with Robert and Dr. Clifford and Dory and a couple others already, so.
Okay. The main points within the letter are bolted in your slides and then you guys should also have a copy of the letter in front of you. Just to summarize some of the comments, the first page are compliance with Kansas statutes. About the middle of the page is a statute dealing with the lease purchase agreements and that they have to conform with the cash basis law. And that meaning they need to have the required municipal lease clause in the lease agreement, which allows the county that in the event there's not budget or cash authority to, to make the payments that you can get out of that lease. And this is actually in the letter due to a lease you guys entered into in two thousand nineteen. But since it's an ongoing lease that the county is still in, this comment will still be in your letter as long as the lease, until you pay off the lease or have an amendment done. So just a reminder that any capital lease agreements have that clause in them. And then at the bottom of the page, contractors' bonds. This statute deals with contractors being required to provide bonds for any public works contracts that exceed a hundred thousand. And during the year, there were several that the county entered into that didn't have those required contractors' bonds. So just a reminder to watch that, that threshold mark and make sure those, those bonds are included. And that just protects the county from any future liability if the contractors were to default on their obligations. On the next page, in the middle on page four, there are several comments that deal with the budget preparation. And like Teresa said, we've gone over all of those in detail with Dory and Robert. Just things to watch for in preparing this next year's budget. And then at the bottom, the couple comments under cash are minor, just dealing with making sure all signature cards get updated and voiding any checks outstanding over two years. The comments under dispersments, just some reminders that when purchase cards are used, make sure any documentation is attached to support that dispersment. A reminder, just to make sure that the county's policy regarding bids is followed. It's not a statutory requirement, but it is a county policy to make sure all bids are obtained over certain thresholds. And there were some purchases made during the year, and I think it was due to time constraints that you guys entered into without bids. And then the last two comments under dispersments are just reminders to make sure that all reports are reviewed for accuracy, such as the accounts payable listing, make sure that agrees to the accounts payable and the trial balance, just agreement between reports. And then a couple comments under grants, they're kind of related just in that those people in charge of grants need to make sure that their reports are reviewed for accuracy, that you're meeting deadlines, that the balances in the reports agree to the trial balance, just so you're not having to repay grant funds that may have already been spent. And then there are several pages of comments that just are specific to the different departments of the county. And all of them are really similar in that the departments need to also make sure that signature cards are being updated, voiding checks over two years old. A lot of the departments use QuickBooks as their accounting system and they need to be careful to make sure they date any activity in the current year they're working in and don't go back to prior years dating items. And then the last two pages of the letter deal with resolutions from the prior year. So, and like Teresa said, two of those resolutions are material weaknesses that were, were reported in two thousand nineteen. So the county did do a good job in following up and cleaning up a lot of these comments, especially in a year with COVID and having to work from home and different odd things that happened during the year. And then the other letter that's provided as part of the audit is the letter to the governing body, and that's the same letter as it's been in the past. It just goes over a summary of what our responsibility is, is auditors versus your responsibility as management. Lets you know there are no new accounting policies implemented during the year, no changes in accounting policies. And then also lists out any significant estimates within your financials, which is just accounts payable for the county. And then financial statement disclosures, because those can also involve judgment, the one would be the compliance with Kansas statutes. And there are no difficulties in the audit. Attached to this letter are also any journal entries that got made to the financials. And also a copy of the management representation letter will be attached to that letter.
I think that was all we had to go through with you. We, we added a couple, two or three slides as we've had in the previous years, but they weren't ones we were going to walk you through today. They're there for your information. More than happy to try to answer any other questions.
Questions, anybody?
Teresa, you used to provide us with, along with those other charts that you showed us here today, with comparing areas, local governments, will you do that later on in the year? When did we did?
Well, we usually did that in, as part of the budget process. But we've shared those graphs and that information last year with Robert and his team. So I would guess maybe he's going to build on that, yes.
Okay.
Very good.
You know, I really appreciate those. Those are really interesting reading.
We appreciate your report, ladies. I'm sorry to make you wait.
That wasn't a problem. We, we appreciate all the assistance we got from the, all the county staff. It was a difficult year for them, dealing with the COVID pandemic and everything. But some of the work was done remote, but it worked out well, the audit process and things went well, so we appreciate that.
We can't let you, I think we have a question too, but we can't let you go until we inquire about Gary.
I haven't heard from him here for a while. I think the last I knew, he was handling and dealing with the pandemic well and joining the new grandson, so.
Yes, as our representative to audit committee, I just want to thank you all for the very good audit. And I'd compliment Dory, Robert and Trista for an extremely clean audit and cleaning up of any outstanding loose ends. I appreciate the law enforcement bar. I think it should be not lost on the citizens what the cost of law enforcement is as part of the county budget. So thank you for providing that. And then I'm always impressed at how low our long-term debt is. I think this county's been conservatively and well-managed. And we, it leverages us for future projects to be in such a good position regarding our debt, so, thank you.
Anybody else? Including you, do you have anything to? Ladies, have a great, great day and thank you.
You also, if you have questions when you're looking at, because I know you're all going to go and read this book. If you have questions on it later, feel free to holler at us, that's what we're there for, so, thank you all.
Thank you very much. Moving right along, Dory Munyon, a domain registration authorization. It's an interesting letter you have there about domains.
Yeah, yeah, so we're just asking you to consider.
Then where is finnycounty.org and go to finnycounty.
Exactly, exactly. It's, it's actually a little bit more secure. There's some oversight of anything with a dot gov domain from like CISA and the National Security Agency, things like that, which I think was outlined in the letter. So we would just like your consideration of that. I've spoken with Doug, there is no additional cost and the work to be done would be minimal. It would be handled through our, our website host. And we would manage that with the, you know, with the, the public in order to get, you know, the word out and make sure that it's a seamless transition.
There is a cost. All of our, all of our little cards have the wrong, have the wrong.
And, and those, that domain will continue to be ours and we may just have it redirected to dot gov. So if somebody goes to finnycounty.org, it would kind of redirect them over to finnycounty.gov completely seamless. Not really noticeable to them and then we can start transitioning that in over a period of time.
Okay, well, I did slow down long enough to read this out of a hundred and two pages, so.
You did?
Yeah. Yes. It calls for a chairman's signature, so if that's the will of this commission, I guess we need a motion. And if it's not the will, we'll do something else.
I'll make a motion. I, I do have a comment, Ms. Chairman. I would move to authorize the chair to sign the authorization letter requesting responsibility for the domain name finnycountyks.gov.
I would second that, but I also have a comment.
All right, second it, and so now we'll stop for discussion. Go ahead, Lon.
Bill had something first.
Well, mine, and, and Dory's pretty much answered it, but on, like the letterhead that this is on does not have the, or does it at the bottom have the?
It does.
So are we just going to let letterhead and that kind of thing run out because of what you just said as far as us owning the ORG?
Really, yeah, and really the only thing that we have printed and in stock would be your business cards. We don't print letterhead until we need it, so that'll be a pretty quick transition.
Because I, it was kind of tied to Dave's question is what kind of, and I wouldn't think it'd be exorbitant anyhow, but what kind of costs we might have for anything that has our.
I don't anticipate.
Has our domain name on it.
Yeah, I don't anticipate any additional costs because we can take our time transitioning this. Getting it registered doesn't mean we have to start using it right away. So, you know, we can kind of transition slowly.
And I remember this is maybe a bit off topic, but what can happen. Rush Limbaugh, at one time, somebody filed for rushlimbaugh.com and he could not get to it. And it was shy, they wanted big money to, to release that, but somebody could.
Yeah, I do think that Fannie County's had similar problems in the past after talking with Doug. However, the, the dot gov act of two thousand twenty that passed, it actually moved the, the ownership and oversight of that dot gov domain to where only authorized organizations can get it, get a dot gov and requires a request from like a chairman of the board, whoever the top official is for the organization.
Okay. But to Dave's point, there, there is value in ownership of our old names.
We will retain.
Through GoDaddy or whomever, because, yeah, I mean, in the GOP, we have someone who owns finnycountyGOP.org who will not give it up. And they have a site to which search engines go. So the Fannie County Republican side is what I own, has a conflict. So I, I do think despite the minimal cost, that we should keep control of some of those other names.
Absolutely, yeah, that's one thing that, you know, we would continue to maintain ownership of the dot org.
Those are two hundred bucks for three years or something, they're not expensive.
The dot org, yeah, and that's, that's a cost that we're used to. The registration of the dot gov do, domain is actually no cost at this time.
I see that, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Then let's take a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes. And resolution oh-five dash two thousand twenty-one establishing a fund for ARPA. Who's going to discuss that?
You heard Trista mention a few minutes ago that we had received approximately three point five million dollars last week. And this is a fund established to track that in our GL. So you did a similar resolution when we received our Spark funds. It's just an authorization to create a fund to track those receipts and expenditures.
And it requires a signature or the whole board or?
Yes, the resolution actually has the entire board on it.
Okay. So we need a motion to be considered to approve this resolution.
Chairman, I move we approve resolution oh-five dash two thousand twenty-one.
Second?
Second.
I have a second, is there a discussion? If not, all those.
Yes, 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 how, how are we going to manage this money? I, I want to know where we're going with that. I know the governor just reinvented Spark, but what are we doing in the county?
As we spoke before on this, on these proceeds coming in, we're looking at the treasurer's guidelines on this to potentially try and fund the new Health Department EMS station. That was a discussion that we had a couple months ago to try and do that. We did meet with Jeff as early as last week to continue that discussion, but there's new information coming up on, through the treasurer's office on a weekly or more frequently basis on how to use the money. Additionally, we talked with, with Jeff's bunch about assisting us on managing that. We'll send out a, an RFQ on that and get an idea of how they may assist us. Of course, you know, there'll be, this is a long-winded grant, if you will, has a long suspense date. It's not as quick as what we're currently in on the Sparks grant or the connectivity grant. So they would help us with reporting and so on and so forth. So we're looking at reviewing those guidelines and getting assistance from his firm right now on that so that we can make the best impact as we can. Questions or concerns in that direction?
Well, I, I, I think we need some stakeholders to make some input. I mean, this money could go to childcare, water and sewer projects. I mean, there are four main areas. And I appreciate, you know, the effort to create a new Health Department EMS facility, but I, I, and we need input. We need, we need to be at the table here as commissioners.
Is that something, how do you wish to proceed then as a, as a board in that? Why don't we try and gather then, if you don't mind, not only just the current update from the treasurer's department on, on how these funds can be utilized, but then additionally, what other funds are available out there through this Recovery Act? As you know, the local municipalities, the school districts, the junior college, all receive funding directly. Additionally, there are specific dollars out there to be applied for at either the state or the federal level for things such as economic development and these, these types of projects. So why don't we try and gather all that to, to. So, why don't we try and gather all that together and, and try and see from that point if that would be okay?
We, we cannot use that though for property tax reduction, can we?
That is correct, that is correct.
Well, we kind of need to look at, in my, my verbiage, a one-time opportunity, something that's not going to be an ongoing cost.
Absolutely.
Okay, anything else?
Well, I was, I was just going to echo what Larry said and it ties to how you kind of summarized it, Robert, and that is, until, and before we get that input from other stakeholders, I think, and in my simplified mind, we need the page that says, these are the rules. We need the page that says, these are the entities that are going to have funding from other sources and, and these are the other sources. And, and until we have that, I, I think it's hard for us to go out and get that input. So I'm just kind of echoing what's been said, but just emphasizing that point.
We need one more page Lon, that page of the list of things, the projects that we are considering, that have considered, will consider.
That would be the work session page. But I think that it starts with what we know to be the truth in, about funding sources and so forth, like you've summarized here just a second ago.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table and we need a vote, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Let me look, board governors, do you have anything this time?
No, but just a comment, Jay Hall is supposed to be at the county commissioner meeting this week and giving us a summary of different aspects. So there may be more from that at our next meeting.
This maybe is not board governors, but I'm going to throw it in right now. How many arrangements do we have made to present our sales tax initiative? I, I have the 23rd of, of June with the Rotary Club is.
I, I have, and I need, and I was going to mention this in my commissioner report, but I need the handout by next Wednesday. I have Board of Relaters at noon, next Wednesday at the Fennepin Center.
And I asked over at the Senior Center for, for a time when the most folks are there having their noon lunch. And that depends on the menu, I found out, and so. We're going to check that menu.
Yes, it does.
And then, I want to make a comment under the board governors. Our new, uh, ex-official member of the library board has done an outstanding job. I see all kinds of publicity about, we had to farm animals, he being a farm animal guy, and tractors and, well, had all kinds of things going on over there, so. But my point is, besides being a little facetious here, is that's good advertising. That's, that goes over well in the coffee shop circles when we see deposits and stuff like that, so. Anyway, anybody else see anything for board governors? County administrators report, we want to do all this before we have executive session? Which, what fits your needs, because I don't know quite where we're heading to here. Who do we need in exec session?
So, I would like the county administrator, myself, and the county HR head, Kelly Munyon, to be in the executive.
And the commission?
And the commission, yes.
Okay, so I'd, I'd accept a motion, and how long do we need, 15?
This is for what, an elected person?
It's attorney-client, as I understood.
Attorney-client, thank you. I'd move to adjourn to executive session for a period of 30 minutes, including.
Thirty?
Thirty.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Up to fifteen, you're quick. Include the HR director, county attorney, or our attorney, Ann Robert, and the commission of purposes of attorney-client privilege, no decisions will be made.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? We'll now vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Can you repeat that?
No, I couldn't possibly.
Thank you.
You're still missing a couple of people. So you did what? Has Long have been informed about the less than five acre property opposition? I'll visit you later about it. You're ready for your report?
Hey, up on your screen, we've placed the latest and greatest pamphlet after getting feedback from the commission. And thought we would just go ahead and scroll down. I believe this is the PowerPoint presentation. That was developed being the same theme with with this sales tax initiative being just informing the voters of its history. What it was used for, when it was first passed, and the accomplishments with that. And as we continue to scroll, then we go through the voter information that we have. We talk again about the property tax stabilization impact that that quarter of one percent plays within the for property owners and so forth. And is there another page to this as well? Yeah, we talked about the infrastructure and improvements that were made. We talk once again about the equivalence, if you will, of the property or sales tax revenue. As it equates to mill levies or property tax within the county operation, which is across the top at two point two mills. That's the impact there. And the city of Holcomb, which is seven point one mills and Garden City, which is four point six mills. We talk about this is not a new sales tax, but a continuation of the current one that is setting the middle of next year. As we pay off the debt early on on the building down south. More election information here, dates, key dates and so forth. And is there one more? That's it. So that's that's it in a nutshell on that PowerPoint. When we were in Holcomb, was it last week or the week before? Week before. The feedback that we got, Adam, do you have the either the handout sheet or the trifold? Go down, trifold, flip the page, or, yep. Okay, so if you look at the feedback that we got from the city council there had to do with. Was it to the important note? This one here did not have that. It was highlighted in yellow.
The important, this is not a sales tax increase?
Well, there was one other thing is that we talked about how it was generated. That approximately just less than half of the sales tax that is.
It's highlighted now, so and I apologize, I gave Brad Adams the wrong ones, but nearly half of the sales tax revenue generated by this portion of the sales tax.
Is paid by the people who live outside of Finney County. A property tax solution is paid only by Finney County property owners. So that'll be added right there under the important notes.
And that's the only difference that you see up here. And once again, that change has been made, but we just got the incorrect one up there on the screen.
Sorry.
Okay, and as as you heard, CVB will be assisting us in printing those out. Just need to be aware of when you engage different committees, organizations, groups. So that so that they can print those as as you need.
Do we have anyone in our midst that has a connection with the Lions Club? I'm not sure who the chairman is now. That was Tyler.
Wydham.
They meet on Tuesdays at noon. Try to touch base with them. I'll do my best to try to get them tracked down, see if we can get on their schedule. And then for the little rotary group, to me, it'd be a cleaner presentation to stand and hand them the trifold rather than trying to go through a PowerPoint. Just because it's a small group.
Sure, and then I believe that PowerPoint, what is that, six pages perhaps? It's just a small, it's just a short briefing. So either the trifold or the, we've got a one page.
Well, that, yeah, that could be something we hand out.
Correct.
For next Wednesday, all I need is a handout because I have a very limited amount of time because they have another program. But I've been asked to come in and do this. So either one of those handouts, and I don't know how many they might have attend a board of realtors meeting, but usually it's pretty well attended.
Eighty.
Yeah, I mean, it could be as many as eighty. So I'd say I need a hundred handout, I need a hundred handouts prior to eleven thirty next Wednesday.
There were eighty-nine license realtors in the county.
I know the one I've addressed them before, that they have a very good turnout. And then, oh, and then the other, I could use them for that morning, the morning of the sixteenth. I just happened to think, that's chamber breakfast. If you're if you're going to attend, you can bring them, but but we need them, and I don't, you might just check with Mica and see what kind of reservation they have. But chamber breakfast that morning, realtors at noon on the sixteenth.
And I would actually like the PowerPoint, I don't know if you could send it to me, Dory, for the Republican Party meeting on July sixth. The day of our next meeting that night.
Okay, you have some other things to report about it.
Oh, excuse me, Robert, when you mentioned PowerPoint, you might ask Mica if she would prefer the PowerPoint, I mean, would like the PowerPoint in addition to the handout.
Okay.
Because I don't know what they have for the program.
I wouldn't hurt, Dory, just to send the PowerPoint to each of us, and then if we need it, we have it on.
But if you if you take care of chamber breakfast, I mean, I'd be glad to speak to it, but if you.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. Other things, just update on our grant process. Did a final closeout on call on our connectivity grant. Recall that was over that one point eight million dollars. Did that on Friday afternoon. I should be receiving documents this week to sign off on, and then following that, then the state will cut us the second half of that check. That amount, which was nine hundred and eleven thousand plus. Spark Grant, we received our final billing from from the consultant. We'll pay that off. There'll be a small balance left that will go back to the county for reimbursement of wages as it's allowed. And that'll be closed out. Reporting date on on that is June thirtieth. Reporting date on the connectivity grant is June twenty eighth. And then, as Trista pointed out, we did receive our first half. And I'll go ahead and start gathering the information for you to get a little bit broader overview of of what kind of money is available directly to some of the agencies here in town. And then what can be applied for.
We're through doing business with Jeff and company.
At this point in time, technically, technically, yes, still may want to utilize him for this this other one. We'll send out a request for qualifications on on that, just to get an idea. Follow up on, as you know, that Colleen will be leaving the health department. Both Dana and Sandy are taking over the lead on that. She is working with them. I will be too on that transition. Stephanie is will be handling the scheduling at the fair for upcoming events. She's been working in that regards there at Public Works. She's been working in that regards with the fair for about a month or so. As well as the billing aspect as it is all as well. Rex, as you know, is taking over the managing of the setup staff and tear down staff for the fair, fairgrounds. He's he's in essence incorporating that into the overall building the grounds maintenance and crew and so forth. Larry up there in Public Works is handling the road stuff now. In fact, he and I have a meeting today to discuss the just the topic that we had the first thing in the public comment this morning over there in Pierceville. So we're following up on on that. Public Works was, to his knowledge, was not aware of the construction going on on the on a new road.
Which Larry is taking over?
That's Bungardt, Bungardt, yeah. And then Ray Lopez, of course, is doing the utilities there as he as he has been.
I don't mean to interrupt, but one question kind of associated. When Carmen was giving her report this morning about septic systems and so on. Do we still have a septic system inspection program going on down there?
Yes, we do. That is, that's that's Ray's department. Yep, yep. Once again, we're just going through the budgeting process. Continue on with that. Do have budget meetings this week. I think, if I remember correctly, usually start back up Tuesday afternoon. Leave this, give you a brief idea of where we're at on on those. Of course, you've received outside agencies. You'll be receiving those. We have the attorneys on Monday mor- or excuse me, Wednesday morning. Roden Bridge, two o'clock.
No, Tuesday morning.
Eight thirty on the sheriffs on Thursday morning, district court Friday morning. Treasure budget meeting, treasures budget meeting as well. And clerks on Thursday as well. So we have full slate on budget meetings as we continue on in that regards. Any other questions for me?
So the email that I forwarded to you, and I don't know if there is a mention of that to Martin, but anyway, I forwarded it to you asking, I said, you mentioned Stephanie. My concern is not just from that one organization, but from any other organization, that they're being notified, first of all, of the events that are already scheduled. That they're being notified that there's a change in fairgrounds administrator or whatever the title is for. And then secondly, and three parts, Stephanie then is a Public Works phone number or?
Yes, it's it's the same phone number that they would have been calling if they were contacting the fair anyway. So she'll be the one that's actually taking the call directly.
Thirdly, is IT updating our website and so forth to show who the fairgrounds coordinator is, who the fairgrounds, I should say, contact is.
We'll we'll get that updated on the fairgrounds contact.
I've had the question for more than just this one organization.
Okay.
We just need to make sure they're not searching around the county trying to figure out.
They will call the same number as they have been all along. Yep.
Anything else, Robert?
That is it.
Just a couple of things. We did this morning in my mail, I had the contract for sale with regard to that Eighth Street property. So we do have that signed off by Mr. Hughes.
Half acre, whatever.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah. So I put closing on that for June twenty first at our next meeting. Fingers crossed we can get everything in place. We'll need a signature from you on that one, on the contract. And then with regard to closing dates on those properties we put up from bids, closing date is today. So I have two of the warranty deeds we've received payment from Mr. Rada and for the Pennsylvania property. And then we've received payment, according to Dory this morning, from Robert Lee with regard to the property on Eleventh Street. I've informed Dave that we have a closing over at First American Title for Claudia Paez, who is financing the purchase of that property. So that's at one o'clock.
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
I'm going to jump to Bill, the KAC. You're good? All right, then we'll jump around you. Go back to Larry.
Okay. Robert and I had a sales tax presentation. What benefit the sales tax does for all of us. Had a regional juvenile detention meeting. Beth got it organized. We've got a lot of new faces on the committee. Seemed like there was a lot of files missing with who was on, who was off. And so I think we're getting things organized and thank goodness for the CARES money to help fill a four hundred and some thousand dollar budget shortfall down there. That we had some problems. But I think Beth Beth's got it back in line and it looks like it's working good. Library board meeting went very successful. We've got a new contract that Linda reviewed with LSNS, and so that's taken care of. And attended the coronation of the new sheriff. If that's the way you want to put it. Bill ran that meeting.
That's it?
That's it.
All right, thanks, Larry. Bill?
Yeah, we did nominate a sheriff, but the governor has the paperwork and has not appointed yet, so we'll wait to hear back. I'm going down to the KAC tomorrow evening. I don't know if you all are going for the reception at the Mid-America Air Museum. I had some calls regarding Highway eighty-three. I went to the Big Pool opening, and I've been there twice now, and it is as packed as Roxanne said. And just and freezing on the opening day. Jerry Schultz has contacted me regarding us replacing Tom Walker on the twenty-fifth district nominating, judicial nominating commission.
After you called me, I thought about that. Do we need a request from somebody like you or whoever to fill that, or do we just?
I asked Jerry for input. He has some names in mind, and I don't, what we don't know is is he serving out the remaining term or what are the logistics? So I'll get with Jerry on that. He promised, I texted him this morning. In fact, and that's all I have, the pro-am today. Thanks.
You're going to golf over par, under par, or around par?
We're going.
We have hundred par.
Well, I must give you a chance.
Yeah, a couple of things.
On the water, the water projects.
Uh-oh.
Somebody's calling you. On the water projects, Jan and I were over in Dodge City Friday evening because we had to go pick up stuff from a cemetery. And and we just drove by their water. And we just drove by their water lagoon, whatever it is, Boot Hill Lagoon or something. But anyhow, it was right about closing, they must close at seven and I mean, people were just streaming out of there. So our our conversation has been, somebody's going to go to Dodge City and then they may want an outing to Garden City. To see what this one's like or Parrot Cove and bounce back and forth and we'll have people from Garden going back to the other one. So between the two communities, I think the three water projects are going to be well used. I had several constituent calls, you saw one of them today with regard to Pierceville. But there's been a few others that I have touched base with Roden Bridge about. And then I am going to KACCA conference for most of the of the event down in Liberal this week. Mentioned the sales tax for real estate in Chamber next Wednesday. I was supposed to, or we are supposed to have a workforce board meeting. Unfortunately, they're still wanting to do it by virtual and I'm not into the virtual things, but it's the annual meeting. So I'll be participating in that on Friday. Then they had an interesting event take place out on East Fifty about a week, week and a half ago. The guy that had all the dogs that we had to deal with when I first got on the commission is deceased evidently. And they had trouble getting into his place without getting the dogs out. And so they had the dog catcher and and all kinds of law enforcement out there about a week and a half ago. But there's no dogs out there at that property at this point. So it was created excitement over on the east side of the county with all the law enforcement vehicles that were there. And I guess that's about it.
Pretty limited, I was on the road when Great Plains had their last virtual meeting, so I wasn't able to attend that. And on a tractor with economic development and my schedule is horrible for June, so I will not be doing anything. I will try to, as far as sales tax, I'll hit the sand and sage guys, but I won't do that till July. And I will not be doing anything in June, write it down, I'm going to be farming.
If you can keep your equipment going.
That's half of it, ninety percent of it.
My report is short in that I spent a week out of state, got a chance to go to Florida. And so I'm kind of behind here. I did attend the Finney County Committee on Aging meeting and Robert, they had a, I asked about how some things were going, including their budget. And they had something for me to bring back to you and see if it would work next year. And that would be to give them until the first day of May in order to come up with their numbers so they could have a board meeting rather than than two board members. Yeah, you had it right ahead of their meeting, so so if you understand their dilemma. And I did have a meeting with with our with our good Robert and Linda. And we're going to have another here in a little bit, we're going to go to sign away a piece of property. So if there's nothing else, folks, we will.
Mr. Chairman, just a question to Larry, I forgot to ask during my report. That contract with the library management company, is that year by year or?
Five years.
Five years, okay, I thought it was multi-year, but I couldn't, okay.
It's got an out.
Yeah, it's after the first year.
I didn't, I couldn't.
And they have a Schedule A every year that they adjust. Our next meeting is June twenty-one, so we shall see you all, thank you. And if somebody wants.